My apologies. You need me to start over, Krista? Okay, with that, we'll go to roll call.
Councilmember Coco. Councilmember Soltes.
Here.
Councilmember Hurdhausen.
I am present.
Councilmember Simomo.
I am here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
I am here.
And we have a court here, honor.
Thank you. And with that, if you could all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much for that. And with that, we will move to approval of the agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Regan. Let's seek for a motion to approve the agenda.
It's on move, second.
It's been moved by Christine and seconded by Joe to approve the agenda. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous to approve the agenda as posted. With that, we'll move into our first of three public communications, and we have our own King County assessor, John Wilson, joining us tonight. We can move John over to give our presentation. There you are. John, welcome. Thank you so much for coming tonight to give us a presentation.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. If we could, let's see if we can, we're gonna start the video here. Have and help us hopefully won't scare too many of you. And then I would like to share the screen. So let's see if we can get this show rocking and rolling. Now I just gotta find the right, here we go. All right, we're gonna share this. But rather than start with questions, we'll start here. And let's see, hopefully everybody can see, I want to talk tonight a little bit to you about property values and COVID-19 and the very real impacts that a global pandemic have had on our community. As you all know, a year ago in March, Governor Inslee issued the stay-at-home-stay-safe order, and some sectors found themselves suddenly shut down, especially the hospitality sector, hotels, cruise ships, convention centers. We had sporting events without fans in the seats, and restaurants, especially those that depended upon dining in service, found there was no one to come in and dine, and brick-and-mortar retail took a real hit. And this very much was one of the scenes we saw in downtown Seattle, right as the order was issued. Once bustling downtown turned silent, almost like a ghost town. One of the major hotels downtown that has 1,200 rooms, just as the order took place, had only eight guests in the entire hotel. And this very much became a sign of our times. Sorry, we're closed due to COVID. And that affected us too, because what we saw was, on the one hand, residential impacts were relatively small. And I'll go back and talk about those in a bit more detail here in just a minute. But it meant that we had to quickly pivot from face-to-face contact with taxpayers to a virtual environment. And what that meant is to access our services. You can still, we wanted to serve you by phone, by email, or our website. You can also apply online for a senior property tax exemption. We have a website for that and a number and an email. I'll talk a little bit more about the senior exemption program in just a moment. What you're seeing on the screen right now is our new offices. We moved just two weeks ago to 201 South Jackson Street, what's called the King Street Center down in Pioneer Square after spending years in the, what I often described as the diamond window building, the county administration building, which they're vacating and hoping to eventually frankly tear down, although I think they gotta figure out what they do with that catwalk that runs from the jail to the courthouse. You know, we'd ask if you have a more complex issue and require a meeting with our staff, these are still being done either by phone or through Microsoft Teams or email. But feel free to email us or call us to set up an appointment. And if you have questions about property tax payments, the finance and business operations of the county can help you with that. Now, I want to dive into the senior exemption program, because last year we made a significant change. We'd been down to Olympia to get the legislature to change. The program has long been directed toward owner occupants of a home, and you had to be 61 and older or on social security disability or VA disability. But the previous state income threshold had actually been $40,000 across the entire state. Didn't matter whether you were in Covington, or you were in Waukeaham County, or Ponderay County, it was 40 grand no matter what. And that was a real hardship on thousands of taxpayers in King County, because costs are so much higher here. So we got the legislature to finally index that economic threshold by the average median income, and that raised it to 58,423. Now, not 58,425, not 58,400, but 58,423. And that'll be adjusted once every five years as the Department of Revenue adjusts it. You can call right now for information to that on 296-3920. And I'm going to try to shut my phone off. Believe it or not, I still have a landline that occasionally works. And that, but I'm not sure I can even remember the landline number. But this is an important program for seniors, and here's why. Based on an average home value of $600,000, if you receive the full exemption, which means now your annual income is $40,000 or less, it means more than $4,300 in annual tax savings to you. Now we're talking about some real money for homeowners. If you receive a partial exemption, that takes it up to about $47,000. It's still $3,400 off your property tax bill. And if you're at that 58,000 number, it's a $2,600 decrease. So you can see, the senior exemption actually gives seniors great hope in being able to finally get a break on their property taxes and stay in home, and it has no adverse impact on city budget. It does cause a slight shift, and we figure for the typical homeowner in King County, that shift amounts to about $10 a year, or less than a buck a month. Now, what we're seeing right now is in 2021 taxes, they're up about a little over 4%. Total King County property tax revenues were up 256 million, and the local property taxes totaled $6.6 billion. That's for residential and commercial properties throughout King County. Now, it's important to understand that King County alone provides almost 47% of all the state's property tax revenues. And combined with Snohomish County, we provide a little over 60% of the state property tax revenue. Now, what that's meant in Covington is your taxes went up a bit this past year. They went up about 6.4%. 2021 taxes were up a little over 260 bucks, largely driven by county initiatives such as the Harborview Hospital seismic bond issue that was vital for keeping that Region 1 or that regional Level 1 trauma center operating in that. So where do your taxes go? Well, let's give you a quick glimpse. King County doesn't get it all, but roughly 57% of your property tax dollars go to K-12 education. You can see that with the blue, red, and green bands on this chart. You can see sound transit gets about 2%. The county itself gets 17%. Port gets a percent. Cities such as Covington and others get roughly 50%. Fire districts get about 3%. Others, including on Bashon, they even have a cemetery district, for goodness sake. They get about 2%, and the King County library system gets another 2%. So that gives you an idea where that property tax dollar goes. Now, the trends we're seeing right now is residential values, especially frankly in communities like Covington, are strong and continuing upward, and part of it is because there's strong demand and scarce inventory. We are back to a situation which we were in probably two years ago, three years ago, where probably 90% or more of the real estate sales that go down are done in a bidding situation, where it's all too common for realtors to set up an open house. There are some now. I've been to a couple lately with the new woman in my life. And normally what they do is they hold a weekend open house, and then on Tuesdays they collect bids. And what we're seeing is increases that are anywhere from a couple thousand dollars over the asking price to in terms of some real estate properties, a quarter of a million dollars or more over the asking price. So that's all driving assessed values up over the coming years. The commercial sector is much more unpredictable, and certainly quite candidly, downtown Seattle in particular is uncertain. We don't know when convention and visitor trade will come back there. We don't know how many people will actually return to those downtown office towers. Amazon has said they're coming back, but not fully, and that they're giving employees the option to work away. We ourselves, as King County, are not bringing people back until after the Fourth of July. And that ultimately could have an impact on property tax revenue from downtown commercial buildings as lease rates have to be renegotiated. Lease rates are renegotiated generally downward that could lower the assessed value on those properties. What we're seeing though overall is the market is very stable, that in terms of particularly residential properties, COVID didn't have a significant impact, even though a lot of us felt like frankly we'd become perhaps sort of prisoners to our homes, but certainly working from home as I've been for most of the last year. But that didn't have an adverse impact on your value. So we're bracing everybody. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have, and I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and let us return to the hole.
Sean.
Oh, John, thank you. Appreciate it. I just wondered then, if residential property values are going up and commercial values are going down, do you see the burden, the tax burden, shifting from those commercial properties to more the residential taxpayers? And if so, what is the state going to do to adjust that, or are they gonna adjust that? And then I had another question about, you know, a number of, there was rightly rent relief for a number of people, or pauses on evictions. But the people that owned those rental properties probably still had to continue to pay their property taxes. Is there any program for them, or have you seen any impact upon the actual owners of those properties?
Sure. So Tom, I might ask you to help me remember the second one. In terms of the first one, there is definitely the possibility to see a tax shift from the commercial sector to the residential sector. You know, there has been, the last couple of years, because of residential prices, you know, more and more property taxes are coming out of that residential sector. Now, one of the things we are working on this year, and I'm, in fact, later this week, I have a meeting with a work group of other assessors from around the state, is to develop what we're calling sort of a homeowner property tax relief exemption. Most states frankly call it a homestead exemption, where you're given some percentage or a dollar amount off your assessed value to lower your property taxes and that. We're looking right now at a proposal to lower the state share of property taxes, lower the values on that by about $150,000. It's a rather modest amount, but it would allow us to do it without having huge financial impacts. I'd like to do more, but the problem is that gets really tricky in terms of making sure we're funding schools, funding local governments, funding fire districts, and things like that. So that's been a challenge, but I'm keenly aware, because I hear it in communities like Covington, I hear it in neighborhoods even of Seattle, that homeowners are worried that property taxes keep going up and up. We actually had Matthew Gardner, who's the very well-respected economist for Wyndham Irillity and to talk to our staff two weeks ago. And he said, you know, if things keep happening, especially in South County, the way they have been, that he thinks it is conceivable that within the next three years, assessed values on typical homes in a community like Covington or Auburn or such will double. You know, that's great for your equity, I suppose. But I think it's downright scary when you come to look at the property tax fight that that will bring.
Or if you ever think about moving.
Yeah, well, exactly. I mean, you're seeing it already. And, you know, so we've got to frankly figure out how we're gonna rebalance our system a bit so we're not so dependent on taxes. In terms of landlords, that was a subject of great frustration for me in this legislative session, in that we had proposed, we called it the Renter Relief Act, but the idea was to offer landlords some level of property tax relief if they kept their rents at an affordable or below-market value and that. Because, you know, the cheapest, fastest form of affordable housing is existing housing that is kept affordable. We couldn't even get it out of the House Finance Committee, in part because some legislator apparently mistakenly thought I apparently wanted to tear down the International District and turn it into steel-and-glass condos, which was totally wrong. But I have great concern that as the eviction moratorium rolls off, we're gonna find both renters, but also landlords in a world of hurt. And, you know, landlords for a large part of this last 12-month or 15-month period have kind of been an indirect social service agency, providing housing but not getting fully compensated. And the problem that we hear from landlords is in turn what they're getting from their lender is, we're not gonna cut you a break.
Right.
You know, you did the note, you owe the note, we want our money.
Right.
So we've got to figure out some better way to deal with that and see if we can't help renters and landlords get closer to whole. I hope that, does that help answer your question?
Thank you.
Great. Anyone else?
Jared.
Yeah, thank you. It's more of a curiosity question. On that pie chart that was describing the distribution of the property taxes, can you kind of explain the difference between the state schools Part 1 and state schools Part 2?
Sure. The notion there is embedded back several years ago in the so-called McCleary decision and the state legislative fix for that. And so there has long been a sort of Part 1 levy. Part 2 was designed to meet the McCleary mandate, to set educational funding as a, you know, priority to be funded equitably across the state and that. And that in King County in particular, including communities like Covington, meant frankly, we got pinched to help subsidize education in the rest of the state. And, you know, I don't like it, but the reality is, we are the economic engine of the state, and we are always gonna be in a position where taxpayers in King County, and particularly property tax owners or property owners, are gonna be asked to step up and see what you can do to help some of those communities that don't have the wherewithal to fund basic education. So that's the difference. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Beth.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Mr. Wilson. So the question I do have, maybe I kind of didn't connect the dots quite right. When we're talking about property ownership, commercial property, there's still a tax, property tax burden that they're, that they're responsible for. It's just that, are we saying that they aren't able to meet that because they're not open for business? I mean, somebody owns it and somebody's responsible for a debt, right? So.
Right. So it's, we looked at trying to provide some targeted property tax relief to businesses that have really been hit hard. And we ran into legal and political problems with that. But no, businesses still, you know, and part of what we recognized was that in the commercial realm, on the one hand, it's a shame if your business, because of government orders, wasn't able to operate at full capacity for the last year, year and a half. But the reality also is, is the value of that building, the value of that land probably wasn't damaged by COVID, and that you need to pay some property taxes related to that. This is a case where, again, back to kind of my rocking horse, we need to look at how we better balance our property tax or our entire tax system, so that businesses, when they run into something like COVID, those that are really hit have some way to lower some of that burden. Because the problem is in part otherwise, we are literally gonna drive some businesses out of existence, and those ones may well not come back. You know, what we found in COVID is, look, if you were, you know, a home improvement store, a Lowe's, or a Home Depot, or McLendon's, or that, you did okay. You know, you were moving a lot of wood and stuff through there. If you ran a grocery store, you did okay. But if you did a movie theater, good luck with that, although you still had the value of the theater in that, but you couldn't have any patrons. If you had a health club, you ran into problems. Depending on where in the county, if you had a hotel or that, you could run into problems. Restaurants that relied on in-house dining got hammered. My youngest daughter, who's amazingly talented chef, was frankly last year on an employment roller coaster. Have a job, do great, but then that business would hit the skids. They'd lay off people. She'd get a new job. And, you know, it became rinse and repeat. So we want to make sure that every taxpayer pays their fair share, whether it's residential or commercial. But we also want to make sure that the system isn't having some inadvertent and unintended consequences on taxpayers. It may literally dry up that revenue source.
Thank you.
Christina.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening. You can call, could you all please call me John?
All right, John.
When you call me Mr. Wilson, I'm looking for my dad.
No. I do have a question, but I now have a new question to piggyback off of Beth's question. So it sounds to me like industrial businesses, they also have a note that they're not getting relief from just like residential. But we can say that, you know, these businesses were hit hard and they didn't have a revenue. And yet those homeowners, I'm sorry, those property owners that rented their home as, are in the same scenario. So while one looks more commercial-based, it seems like they're both trying to, you know, bring in a living for the families that they have. And just seems like a really, it's focused relief, targeted relief, you mentioned. I just hope we can encompass everybody, not just target the commercial properties that, you know, of course they're providing bread for multiple families, but, you know, not to miss the individual. And you mentioned rebalancing the system. Do you think that is, is that in conversation? Is that an active conversation? Is that an active thought? Is there somebody, you know, running with that? And do we see that in the foreseeable future as something that can be discussed? Because when I see that most of the percentages of, you know, of our property taxes are going to schools, and then I know an exuberant amount of parents that have their children in homeschool and have put their children in private school. Not only are they paying their property taxes, they're now paying for their children's schooling due to, you know, what this year brought and what COVID has brought. And it's kind of a frustrating scenario for so many families. I think I have, gave you like five points in one.
You asked really great questions. Let's see what we can do. The trick kind of under the state constitution is, we can provide right now targeted relief to some taxpayers. That's how the senior exemption program is allowed to function. We cannot do without a constitutional amendment, kind of across the board, relief. The Homeowner Relief Act that we've talked about would require a state constitutional amendment to do that. Yes, there, I think, within that context of doing something to do, deal with property taxes for homeowners, I think there is a building sense with some folks in the legislature, with some of my colleagues in assessor offices around the state, that something needs to be done. And we're hoping that we'll have something that we can start to circulate broader, and I'd be happy to circulate it to any of you here tonight as we kind of put it in a little more shape. You know, part of our challenge is we want to make sure we don't do something that has the unintended consequences of creating financial harm to municipalities like Covington, or the things like Fire District or Hospital Districts or things like that. So that's, that's part of it. In terms of a broader discussion of modernizing the tax system, there are discussions going on in Olympia. I've been part of some of those. I worry that with the legislature as it's now constituted, I'm not sure we can get there. The notion frankly that I have is any form of tax modernization needs to be one that looks at a combination of new potential revenue sources and reduction or elimination of certain existing taxes, such as, you know, we have in King County a sales tax that's almost 10%. You know, businesses, I think universally across the state, fret about the BNO tax. So can you do something in a trade with that? So those are some of the challenges. The schooling issue is a difficult one. You know, as the state constitution spells out, funding public education is a paramount duty of state government. But the problem is, is that thousands of parents across the state don't necessarily feel like their state education system is delivering the quality of education they want for their children. And I get that. You know, I raised four kids, and one of the things you recognize is you only get one chance to educate them. Generally, there ain't do-overs, or at least if you're lucky, they're not do-overs. But we've got to, again, find a better way to fund things and fund local governments so that it's more balanced and everybody sort of pays their fair share.
Yeah, sure. I just, I hope not, you know, and there's no better option here. But, you know, if the doors of a, of a commercial building close, and then a family ends up on the street due to the same cause, again, neither is better, but I would like, you know, I would like to not see that.
Yeah, no, no, I totally agree. I mean, look, we've got to find a way, and it's gonna require some creativity and collaboration, that we are not literally pitching people out on the streets, but we're not necessarily shutting down businesses that provide, you know, gain full employment to perhaps that very family.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sean.
Yeah, that made me think. Thank you, John. I appreciate this. You're probably aware of this, the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority has kind of a two-part funding mechanism. Part of it is property taxes, but another part is a rate that the RFA can raise, but it balances it as either property values go up, that rate goes down, or as property values go down, the rate goes up. So I don't know if that's something that the county can look at, is to kind of create some buffers against that high fluctuating property value going either up or down, that there's a That there's a, a counterbalance on the other side. Um, but you're right, we've got to come up with some way to, to look at these, um, these taxes and how we fund our programs. One of the things I keep talking about is that, the, you know, who would have thought eighteen months ago that we'd be facing this, you know, global shutdown? And all of the revenue sources for a city like property taxes, gas taxes, sales taxes, were all dependent upon people consuming. And they're, um, uh, still being able to have some type of income. And that hit us, you know, right where it counts. And so even as a city, we've got to figure out, uh, with the state, how to diversify our, our funding sources. So that we're, all our eggs are not in that one basket of, of consumption. So I'm just kind of preaching here, but anyway, something, uh.
No, I, 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 I hear you, you know, and, and, and part of what you're touching on is, is the 590 cap. That, that places the, the fire districts and other junior taxing districts in some jeopardy. And, and we, we've got to find a better way to do that. Um, you know, and, and there are some ideas, there's been, you know, a notion of could you raise the five? Should the 590 cap be lifted some? Uh, could it be indexed? You, you know, part of the problem is twofold. One is quite candidly, nobody's really designed our present tax system. It's just kind of happened to us over time. And it's a sort of patchwork of exemptions and taxes and breaks here. And somebody gets hit there and all that. And no one, and it was designed or started when we were largely in an agrarian economy. We relied on timber and wheat and fishing and then that. We're not that economy anymore. It's a part of our economy still, thank God. But it's not the foundation of that economy. So you have to relook at that and, and, and ask what works? What, what can you do to create a tax system that optimizes revenues? But does not create an economic drag on the community? And then as you, you talk about Covington and scores of other communities in King County and across the state. How do you create a more balanced revenue stream with some predictability? Uh, you know, be- because I, I think one of the things, I mean, we've grappled with it this year. We, we took cuts so deep that we're, we're getting backlogs on constitutional functions that we should perform. But I just don't have the staff right now. Um, and, and yet like especially in plotting new plots in new subdivisions. Uh, which I suspect you've got some in, in Covington, uh, that are, are going on. I've got builders going, look, I, I, I gotta get this plotted so that I can sell these, you know, lots or homes and that. And we go, well, great, but we don't have staff to plot it as fast as you'd like us to. So we, we've got to figure out how to work that out in a way that makes sense.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any more questions for John? John, thank you very much for, um, attending tonight and giving us an update on the property taxes for King County and the city of Covington. I really appreciate it. That's a lot of information and very valuable. So thank you for doing that.
Well, Mayor, thank you so much. Council members, thank you for, uh, having me and I really enjoyed it. Hopefully next time they'll actually let me, uh, you know, venture out of the house and come on down to Covington to see you all.
That would be great. All right. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Yep. Take care of everybody. Bye.
Next is our second of three public communications. It is our end of session report and we have Brianna and Holly here from Gordon Thomas Honeywell. Welcome Brianna and Holly. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you. I think, um, there we go. Brianna is now showing her face. Perfect. I am going to need to share my screen. Let me see if I have, I am good to go on that. So give me just a second.
And while Holly is, um, bringing that up, I'll just say, um, that it was a pleasure to listen to the presentation before us. I will note, um, and I, I would be remiss if I did not mention that Representative Pat Sullivan. Uh, introduced a bill that did pass into law this session that includes a property tax deferral. For businesses that were impacted, um, I think by 25% of their previously reported revenues. And they're required to pass the benefit of that property tax deferral down to any tenants or lesaurs. That, um, that benefit from that exemption. So just, just to flag, that's not something we were otherwise planning to cover in our presentation tonight. That, um, came to mind in listening to the presentation from Mr. Wilson just now. And we are really pleased to, uh, provide you with an end of session report this evening. I'm disappointed that we're doing it virtually rather than in person, but it sounds like we're just around the corner from being able to do that. Um, Holly, if you want to advance to the next slide, we'll, um, dive right in. Just an overview of what we're planning to cover tonight. Um, we're going to, uh, do a broad overview of the 2021 legislative session. And then hone in a bit on the outcome of your specific state legislative priorities and conclude with next steps. So I'm going to turn it over to Holly to get us started with the overview of the legislative session. Go ahead, Holly.
Yeah, thanks Brianna. Um, so yeah, just to provide some context, uh, the legislature operates on a two-year cycle. That aligns with, uh, the state's biennial budgets. Uh, this year was the first session of the 2021, 23 biennium lasting 105 days. Beginning on January 11th and ending on time on April 25th. Uh, this year, the, the legislative session was almost completely virtual, as you all know, uh, just like everyone else. The legislature had to adapt to the pandemic environment and, and did so successfully. Uh, a total of a thousand 175 bills were considered, which is significantly fewer bills in a normal session. And really is evidence of, uh, the impact of a virtual format. Um, they ultimately passed 334 bills, which is a little less than the average during a typical long session. Uh, but all in all, the virtual setting did not stop them from moving bills forward. The Democrats continue to hold the majority in both the House and Senate. And with that strong majority, they were able to advance a great deal of bills aligning with their agenda. Uh, which focused on, on climate change, uh, responding to COVID-19. Uh, racial inequality and economic recovery. Any legislation that was introduced but did not pass will be reintroduced during the second year of the biennium. So in this case, all bills from the session that did not make it to the finish line will be reintroduced. And reconsidered next year in the, in the 2022 legislative session. So in addition to all of the bills that were considered, the legislature also invested a great deal of time. Towards developing and passing the three budgets for the biennium. So that is the operating capital and transportation budgets. At the, at the city level, you all often integrate the transportation budget and your, and your capital budget into one. Um, but the state keeps these two separate. All three of these budgets operate on the same cycle. Uh, so for this biennium, the budgets will take effect on July 1 of 2021. And go until June 30th of 2023. When the legislature comes back in 2022, they will be making amendments to the biennial budgets they adopted this session. So moving to the, the first budget, the operating budget funds all state agents, agency operations. Uh, this is the one you traditionally hear about in the news. Uh, going on into the legislative session, it was feared that this budget had. Severe fiscal impacts due to COVID-19 and that the legislature would need to make significant cuts. Um, however, there will, there were several unexpected, but, but fortunate things that occurred. That made this not really the case. Um, the first being, uh, that in March, so a few months into session. The revenue forecast showed revenue collections were expected to rebound to pre-pandemic levels. Additionally, later into this session, the federal government approved the American Rescue Plan. And the state received $4.25 billion that will need to be spent, uh, by 2024. And, and those funds can be spent and, and were spent on the operating capital and transportation budgets. So all in all, um, this was a significant infusion of funding for the, for the state budgets. Uh, additionally, the, the legislature chose to enact a capital gains tax. So while this is likely to be challenged through the court process, if upheld, it will generate 415, 15 million dollars. For the operating budget. All of these components led to an overall operating budget of 59.2 billion dollars. Which is approximately 3.2 billion more than the previous biennial budget. Uh, within this budget, there, there are historical, uh, levels of investment. Uh, in housing, childcare and, and small business support, along with numerous other investments. Um, there is just not enough time to go over all of them. But additionally, over a billion, uh, was held in reserves as well. Uh, the next revenue forecast is this June. And we've already heard rumors that revenue projections will be up even more than what was reported during session. Moving on to the capital budget, this budget funds public and nonprofit construction projects. Uh, excluding transportation projects. Uh, this is the budget that the city most frequently requests funding within. And structurally, um, it is funded by bonds that derive from a portion of the operating budget that I, that I just discussed. Uh, this year, the legislature issued 3.9 billion in bonds. Of that 3.9 billion, 80 million of that has, uh, been reserved for the supplemental budget. That will be established during the 2022 legislative session. And they utilized a portion of the 4.25 billion dollars in federal funds to add to their bond revenues. So 589 million dollars of stimulus funds were tacked on to that 3.9 billion in bonds. Uh, really resulting in the largest capital budget the state has, has created in recent history. Um, I'll talk more about how this, this large investment benefited the city directly here, here shortly. And the third budget is the transportation budget, which is by far the most challenging of the three budgets. Uh, similar to the operating budget going into session. It was predicted that there would be a significant revenue shortfall due to the impacts of the pandemic. Um, however, unlike the operating budget, the transportation budget revenues were not forecast to go back to pre-pandemic levels. And are still not forecasted to do so. Uh, a major component to this revenue shortfall is the decline in gas tax revenue collections and toll revenue collections. Uh, they continue to be down from what was forecasted prior to the pandemic. And to add further financial obligation to the budget, the state, um, has been mandated by a Supreme Court order to replace all state-owned culverts. Uh, this is estimated to be about 3 billion, uh, for the state to fund. The state has been challenged over the last few years to comply with this mandate. They still do not have sufficient enough funds identified to fully comply with that mandate for this biennium. And, and we'll still have to work towards addressing this in the future. So because of the revenue shortfalls, the covert mandate and, and the need for further investments in new transportation projects. There has been a robust discussion around a transportation revenue package. And really as the session carried on, the discussions on a revenue package became integrated into the conversations. On a cap and invest system and a low carbon fuel standard. Uh, those three elements began to be referred to as the brand, uh, the grand bargain. With the idea that legislators would support all three components moving forward in an integrated, uh, fashion. And so to further, further solidify this trio agreement. The legislature approved a cap and invest in low carbon fuel standard. That included language to make the enactment of the proposals contingent upon the passage of a revenue package. That would increase the gas tax by at least five cents. So just last week though, the, the governor vetoed the language connecting these two policies. To the development of a transportation revenue package. So thereby breaking that grand bargain. Um, many legislators on both sides of the aisle have shared their disagreement with this action. And are questioning whether this veto, uh, was over, overstepping his authority. So this may likely be challenged in court. Uh, all in all, uh, transportation revenue package did not pass this session. And is somewhat unknown whether one will be finalized in the near future. Uh, at the end of session, there were a lot of discussions around a special session later this year to finalize a package. And that could definitely still be a possibility. Um, waiting until 2022 or even the 2023 session is, is also a possibility. For the current law budget that passed, the, the legislature adopted a 11.7 billion dollar budget. That utilized 1 billion in federal funds to backfill the revenue that was lost, uh, due to the impacts of the pandemic. That allowed them to keep projects that were allocated funding through the Connecting Washington package back in 2015. For the most part, uh, on schedule as well as, uh, fun part of the state-owned culverts mandate. I will note, uh, specifically that the Connecting Washington funding remaining for the Covington Connector. Um, State Route 516 and State Route 18, uh, projects stayed intact. The budget also received a, uh, replenishment of funds that were eliminated due to the $30 car tab initiative. Uh, the I-976, if you recall, passing. The courts overturned this though, and prior to session, which allowed the legislature to return about 450 million. That had been withheld, uh, back into the transportation budget. So that is my broad overview of the, the legislative session, um, bills and budgets. Um, and I will go to the next and Brianna.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Holly. And, um, it is always challenging to capture 105 days of fast-paced legislative activity. Into a brief presentation for you all. So, um, thank you for bearing with us as we work our way through all of this. Prior to the beginning of the legislative session, um, you all adopted your state legislative priorities, which are the items that. You are asking your legislative delegation to advance forward. And the items that you're really asking Holly and I to dedicate are significant, a significant amount of our time and energy in advancing forward. And so we're going to go through each one of these, uh, legislative priorities in turn. Here's just, this is just an overview slide, but, um, Holly, why don't you just, uh, dive right into the widening of State Route 18? From Izquahobart Road to Regine River.
Yep, I will do. Um, so the, the city continues to take part. In the Southeast Area Legislative Transportation Coalition, or CLTC, as you guys know it. Um, urging the legislature to fund widening and, and safety components of this portion of, of Highway 18. Uh, the project received funding in the past, uh, to get it to construction-ready status by 2023. And in the meantime, the city and CLTC continue to advocate for construction funding. Uh, prior to session, Wash Dot shared with CLTC and legislative advocates for the project. That the cost for construction had increased, uh, due to additional covert replacements. Bridge replacements, uh, landslide mitigation, a handful of other challenging components. Due to the curvy and, and mountainous area that had not yet previously been identified. Um, the cost for construction quickly went from around 285 million. To the 700 million range, which legislators communicated would not be feasible to fund. Uh, regardless, the support for construction funds remain. And the most recent revenue package proposals that both Senator Hobbs and Representative Fai, who are the transportation chairs for the Senate and House. Included 500 million for the project. So although a package has not yet been finalized, this, this puts the project in a, in a great position. To receive funding when or if one does. Uh, in the meantime, uh, we will continue to work with legislators and Wash Dot on a cost estimate for the project. That, that will be closer within, uh, within that 500 million range.
And I, I'll just chime in and note that the work on advocating for construction funding for the widening of. Who's zero out 18 has truly been a team effort with CLTC. And, uh, greatly appreciate Regan and the mayor, um, for conducting several meetings, um, virtually. Um, we, both leading into this past session and throughout this last session to help elevate that request with transportation budget writers. Um, I do, um, I do think we have really a strong champions in Rep Ramos and Senator Mullet. I know that Rep Entenman and Senator Dos, who each serve on the House and Senate Transportation Committees, are also very supportive. Um, so we have really built some strong legislative support around the um, around the project and the request. So Holly, why don't you move us on to, um, the widening of State Route five sixteen?
Yep. So the, the city's other transportation priority is to widen State Route five sixteen from one eighty-fifth to two twelfth or, or east city limits. Um, as you all are aware, the city received funding in the previous revenue package to widen a portion of SR five sixteen. And this ask is to finish out that widening of the final stretch of highway within Covington. Uh, the total ask for this project uh, is thirty point eight million and would require, would also require a transportation revenue package to receive funding. Our ask about two years back was to one ninety-second. However, since then, we've, we've extended out the project to two twelfth or east city limits. Um, this required us to, to shift our messaging a bit and request for an increase in funding uh, with support from the city's legislative delegation and, and from the transportation chairs. The full thirty point eight million is included in the most recent transportation revenue proposals. Uh, just like Highway eighteen, uh, this project is in a great position to receive funds uh, when or if a revenue package is, is finalized and passed.
Thanks, Holly. And I would just note that again, Senator Dos on the Senate Transportation Committee and Representative Entenman on the House Transportation Committee were really integral to getting that request added into the proposed uh, packages.
So on to SoCo Park. Uh, so knowing that the, that the legislature was prioritizing making investments locally in an effort to, to assist with the challenges communities were, were facing due to the pandemic, the city requested um, three point eight seven five million in capital funding to develop SoCo Park, uh, which is in an area that, that lacks outdoor recreation and is near new senior and multifamily residents as well as other existing homes. Uh, the, the final capital budget included double the funding that was originally included in the initial Senate proposal, totaling one point three million towards the development of the park. This is obviously not the full funding the city asked for, but it is a significant investment and can be used towards a portion or a phase of the project. Um, again, a big, huge thank you to the forty-seventh legislators for this appropriation. Senator Dos, Representative Sullivan, Representative Entman, all of them played a significant role in the success of this request.
I also would like to emphasize how rare it is to see a funding amount increase um, by double between the time that you see the budget proposals come out and then the final capital budget being released. That is nearly unheard of and very much a reflective of the savviness of your legislative delegation. I would also note that while one point three million is less than what we requested for, it was one of the larger appropriations awarded throughout the state um, and something you all should be um, greatly appreciative and proud of.
Yeah, and I will just note, um, the, the city applied for an RCO grant. So that land and water conservation fund that you see up below this slide and also received uh, five hundred thousand in state investment uh, for Jenkins Creek Park expansion. So I know that was, that was a, a, a big priority for the city and um, great news. And Brianna, if you wanna take it over from here.
Sure. So um, one of your legislative priorities was around uh, increased uh, funding for local transportation preservation and maintenance needs. This has been on your legislative priorities for uh, several years and is part of a multi-year effort that the, that we're working on in collaboration with the Association of Washington Cities. In twenty nineteen, the Joint Transportation Committee issued a study that highlighted that the need for city transportation funding. Um, and building on that, in twenty twenty, we saw legislation introduced that would have provided cities with some new funding options, um, some local tools to help you um, generate the revenues locally to fund preservation and maintenance. Um, those would have included um, council manic authority to increase the sales tax, um, a utility tax as well as a fuel tax. That legislation in twenty twenty did not pass, and we were reassured at that time that as a transportation revenue package is developed, that the proposal would be integrated into any revenue package. That continued to be the message that we heard throughout this past session. Um, Chair Phi and Representative Ramos have really taken the lead in advancing that concept. Uh, the House did not actually release any budget language or revenue package language in bill form. Um, they only released proposed outlines of their revenue package proposal. Given that we haven't necessarily seen updated language associated with these local option tools, but we are very encouraged that they continue to be part of the conversation as the legislature discusses a proposed transportation revenue package. In addition to the discussion around local option tools, there seems to be an increasing, the legislator seems to be increasingly aware of how hard it is for cities to raise revenues locally. Um, that that does take a, a vote either by council or by um, residents in order to do so, and that some communities may not have the political will in order to take that tough vote. So we did see the revenue package proposals allocate a fairly significant amount of funding to locals in order to meet local preservation needs. The House miles ahead proposal would have allocated eight hundred and twenty-eight million dollars to locals through the Transportation Improvement Board. This would not be a direct distribution of funds to cities, but cities would have to submit grant applications for specific local preservation projects in order to access those funds. Uh, on the other hand, the Senate Forward Washington proposal allocated three hundred and fifty-four million, which would be a direct distribution to cities and counties. That is, um, you can take whatever the city is currently receiving in gas tax revenues and essentially double it, and that would be what you would receive under this proposal, under the Senate proposal. In addition to that, a hundred million would be allocated to the Transportation Improvement Board um, for uh, for projects not necessarily dedicated to local preservation projects. So the message, uh, and the main takeaway from this session is that there is an increasingly an acknowledgement by the legislature of the need to allocate funds to local transportation, preservation and maintenance, but that it's tied up in the discussions around an overall transportation revenue package, which is Holly outlined, are um, uncertain at this time. The next legislative priority that you all had included was one that was uh, unique to this year, and that was social justice reform. I think you all recall that leading into the legislative session, um, we saw a strong demand for social justice reform throughout the entire state. Uh, there were dozens and dozens of bills introduced and discussed on this subject. Uh, and the proposals as introduced significantly evolved and changed throughout the legislative session. At the, um, rather than spending a lot of time uh, going through the back and forth and details of all the proposals, I'll cut to the chase and, and just indicate that the legislature did pass a comprehensive package of over a dozen bills um, that are focused on police reform. And I'll, I'll just highlight a, a couple of them. One is that, yeah, they passed legislation that is going to create an independent office of investigations for any use of deadly force that results in death. That was a bill that was sponsored by your local legislator, uh, Representative Entenman. There's also legislation that changes police tactics, uh, so eliminating the use of chokeholds um, and neck restraints, limiting how gas, or sorry, how tear gas can be utilized, putting in some new requirements around how canines can be utilized. Limiting the type of equipment that law enforcement can acquire from the military um, and a whole series of other changes. They, the legislature passed a bill creating a duty for an officer to intervene if they're observing misconduct. They created a new decertification process of officers for misconduct that is reported. Um, they uh, also changed how arbiters are selected for law enforcement personnel grievances and have um, set up a process by which the state is going to develop the develop a process to collect use-of-force data from all law enforcement agencies. So those are just a few highlights. I do anticipate that the discussion around social justice reform is going to continue into the next session and beyond. I will note that the legislature increased the amount of funding they are providing to cities and counties to go about implementing many of the changes outlined in these, in this package of police reform bills. And the final legislative priority, um, that you all had identified was economic development. And this is an item that had been on your legislative priorities for several years now. Uh, and I am very pleased to share with you all that the legislature took strong action in this area around economic development, I believe, because it aligned very closely with their goals of wanting to support and a strong economic recovery following the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, the legislature approved tax increment financing, which is a proposal that's been requested for um, several decades and has been uh, challenging to get approved by the Washington State Legislature. So this is a significant change. Um, there are forty-eight other states that have some form of tax increment financing that Washington State will be joining. I will note there are some specific Washington State nuances to the tax increment financing that we were able to get passed. First, it applies only to the local portion of property taxes. Um, and, um, and so it does not impact the state property tax whatsoever. We also worked very hard to structure the proposal so that if a, a city or a county or a port proceeds forward with utilizing tax increment financing, that special purpose districts are held harmless. We do this by actually allowing for a small amount of property tax revenue to be collected above the one percent cap. And um, in order to make sure that tax increment financing is used thoughtfully and respects the communities that are um, in areas that are being redeveloped today, the bill does require an impact plan and mitigation analysis. My, um, in the, in this brief present, high-level presentation, the one thing I would note is that um, tax increment financing is a very powerful tool, one that we've been asking for, for a long time. And I would strongly encourage any jurisdiction, um, wanting to utilize it, to use it very carefully and wisely um, to make sure that we can hopefully get the program expanded, um, but also simply make sure the program's going to withstand any challenges. So a great, great deal of success there. In addition to your legislative priorities, you all also adopt, adopt a policy document which outlines your direction for us on the dozens of other issues that are discussed throughout a legislative session. I'm gonna call out just a, a few of them. Um, state shared revenues were fully funded and, as I noted, increased in order to help you implement the police reform package. Um, they also increased the distribution of revenues associated with cannabis. Uh, AWC's fiscal flexibility bill was approved, which provides some uh, temporary flexibility to make adjustments to your city budget. The one percent property tax proposal was introduced, had a really good hearing in the House Finance, but otherwise did not advance this session. So that will be something we'll have to continue to advocate for. Generally, local control at the end of the day was maintained in most situations. The exception to that is House Bill twelve twenty, which does preempt cities in a limited way on the citing of emergency shelter and housing. You all are required to allow emergency shelty, shelter and housing anywhere that hotels are allowed unless you adopt an ordinance uh, that outlines alternatives where emergency shelter and housing are allowed within one mile of transit. Affordable housing and shelter funding were um, allocated at historic levels in both the capital and operating budget, including a significant amount of rental assistance. The Public Works Assistance Account and the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program were both funded at historic levels. There was a lot of discussion about DMA bills. Nothing passed into law and they all got turned into studies. So fortunate for Holly and I, we get to spend a lot of our interim months uh, following that. And then finally, um, throughout, in the middle of the legislative session, the Supreme Court ruled in the Blake decision that the state statute making the possession of controlled substance a felony was unconstitutional. So the legislature re, uh, criminalized the possession of controlled substances, but made it a misdemeanor rather than a felony and put in some diversion requirements. Um, in many ways, um, both the uh, both making it a misdemeanor as well as the diversion requirements may create an unfunded mandate for cities. Okay, so that was a lot. We're gonna transition to talking um, a little bit about next steps. I'm gonna turn it over to Holly, and once she's done, we'll, we'll be ready to answer your questions. So Holly, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Brianna. Uh, so in closing, uh, lobbying is a year-round effort. The accomplishment, accomplishments made thus far have required preparation and advocacy throughout the interim and session, and we have seen time and time again how effective it is to do so. And we greatly appreciate to have all of you engaged throughout the year. Uh, a few next steps as we move forward and per, prepare for the twenty twenty-two session. I would encourage you, if you haven't already done so, to thank the legislative delegation for their hard and especially challenging uh, work this session. The city, I know, has already prepared a time during uh, the July twenty-seventh council meeting to share appreciation. Um, and they will be attending that, so that will be excellent. Um, as we covered earlier, we have two major transportation projects reliant on the legislature finalizing a, a revenue package, so State Route eighteen and State Route five sixteen. Uh, the city passed an ordinance during session that indicated support and um, to urge the legislature to identify additional revenue in order to make further investments in transportation. Um, along with vocalizing our support through testimony and engagement with legislators, uh, we will continue this work and, and keep the city apprised of the developments that occur throughout the interim. Uh, unique to this year, we will be uh, following the redistricting commission who considers, can, considers how to redraw Washington's legislative and, and congressional district boundaries throughout the state. Uh, I know you all received a presentation a few weeks ago regarding the redistricting process. And I'll, and as they continue to make progress, uh, we will be providing updates so the city can follow along and engage if they uh, choose to do so. The twenty twenty-two legislative session, I can't believe I'm talking about this already, but it'll begin on January tenth and will be the second year of the biennium. Uh, to, to prepare for this session, uh, we will need to make updates to the city's legislative priorities and policy document. Um, you know, since some of them were certainly accomplished, uh, we can check those off and we can now move on to other priorities. Uh, with that, um, I will just say it is an absolute honor to advocate for the city. It's exciting to, to go through all of the accomplishments Covington has made uh, thus far and continues to tackle each year. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to represent the city. It is, it is really a privilege. So thank you. Um, and we have definitely taken up enough of your time, but we are happy to take any questions or if you think of any at a later time, uh, please do not hesitate to reach out to Brianna or I. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Holly. I'll just say we love the Cub. So, um, happy to be part of the team and, uh, and I wanna just give strong kudos to city staff as well. Oftentimes, we reach out and ask for information on a quick turnaround time. And um, Reagan always gets city staff to give us the, the information right away and just appreciate their partnership and hard work. Um, so thank you and yeah, happy to answer any questions you may have. Sorry to talk at you for so long, especially over Zoom.
I just, before we ask for questions, Brianna and Holly, I wanna thank you both for working with us and staying on top of me to be down there and, or to make phone calls and virtual. It's a pleasure and an honor to partner with the two of you to uh, help make things move forward, growing towards greatness. Does council have any questions? All right. Well, if we do have questions, we'll make sure and uh, reach out to you. I, I've reached out to you both several times. So thank you again and uh, keep up the great work. We really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Have a good rest of your council meeting.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Thank you. Have a great evening. Next up, we have our third of three public communication. It's our Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan kickoff presentation. And Ethan, are you kicking this off? I see that Mr. Beckwith is here with us.
I am actually going to hand it off to, to Matthew, our Parks Planning and Development Manager to introduce this next item.
Perfect. Thank you. Matthew, welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Pleasure to be with you. You might recall I was with you about a month ago. We brought before you a contract to hire a qualified firm, the most qualified firm for our needs to update our park recreation and open space plan. And then I made sure I dropped that acronym on you guys, the PROS plan, so that we all get with it. Tonight's my pleasure. It's a, just a month later, but we have the Tom Beckwith Consulting Group selected and wanting to kick off the process. So using public information, I will be introducing Tom and his team to speak to you about the, their proposed scope and schedule, public involvement process that we can all look ahead to and do that in a public way. It's appropriate tonight too, though, that we've had this financial discussions that you've had, that Tom brings that kind of expertise and would like to share with you some of his experience looking at financing, how to advance a park system. So you'll recall a PROS plan documents your park system, your goals and values, objectives, which are very strong in our case. But they also ideally would have implementation tools, including financing options. That's the area that we were looking for and feeling there was some deficit in and the need for our, our six year update to focus on. So if you're following me, we do a PROS plan update every six years. We have the most qualified firm here tonight. That's Tom Beckwith. He will be sharing with us his proposal and then wrapping it up with a little bit of discussion, which we think council's quite interested in about financial options that we will be considering in the process. So let me introduce Tom.
Thanks, Matthew. I also wanna introduce my team member, Fredusa Naza. Produces a planner. She's gonna be working on the, on this project and you'll see both of us on and off through the process. So if you'll give me the screen. There, everybody be able to see that. Okay, I can see nodding heads. We're gonna give you a very short overview what the process is, as Matthew talked about, some of the, what we think are the key elements. Brooks advanced too far. This is our full chart of, of our basic process. You can see on the left, there's six tasks. The key things we're gonna do is to, is initiate the process. We're conducting workshops last week with Parks and Recreation Commission and with you tonight as a kickoff. Then in task two, we're gonna update your demographics and inventories. There will be a series of workshops and surveys. The workshops we wanna do with your adjacent jurisdictions, some of your user groups, staff, of course. And the surveys will be of your residents, of your school students. We wanna, in the fall, potentially do your middle school and high school because their interests are quite different in some cases than what you might find of adults. Task three will update your goals and strategies. Task four will update your planning elements. Including, I'll give the public participation in a minute. And task five, update your implementation program, include your impact fees, your implementation measures and so on. And then six is to publish it. Now where you see the round circles and the bark, the, the bars through there, those are workshops and events. And we've scheduled sessions with you in the Parks and Recreation Commission. We've also scheduled a number of open houses and pop up events at some of your festivals and go to presentations to some of your major groups. And that would happen in task four and that would happen in task five. And the very last thing that we'd like to do is you could close to getting your plan formalized is a survey of your registered voters. All of them, where we show what the draft plan proposals are, what the key issues are, what we wanna know from them are priorities and financial preferences, particularly on what it's gonna cost to develop and maintain your system. And we finalize your plan based on what that information tells us. We're looking at nine months, but when we put it together, this is the calendar schedule that we put together. Down on the bottom, the color code shows that the orange are holidays that we're working around. The blue will be when those open house events will happen. The red will be when we're holding, the bright red when we're holding workshops with user groups and your public. The green are the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission. The brown is your planning commission and of course the alternative red is city council. You can see how the task on the left correspond with those dates. The yellow is when we'll be doing the surveys. So the initial outreach surveys will begin into this month, the first part of June, and then the registered voter survey will be the last part of September, the first part of October. Some of the project financing options that we've used in other cities are shown on the left. These are kind of a inventory of all the different mechanisms we've used to develop projects. On the right are the most recent application of where we've used these tools. Now we've used multiple tools and, and a number of those cities. What we're trying to show here is just an example of the most predominant one. So we're looking at conservation futures, utility taxes, retail sales, hotel tax, local option for counties at least. REIT grants, CIPA mitigations, G M A park impact fees, partnerships, volunteers, property tax levies, which we've been using rather than bonds. And the last is the lease to own, which is a nonprofit development of, of public facilities, particularly city halls and recreation centers. These are some of the same kinds of ideas we've used for financing the programs. On the left are a, a list of what some of those options are. On the right is the most recent place where we've used them. So we're looking at user fees, including full costs, including overhead for those which we think have major private benefits. User fees with the county and city county fee differential. That's where we're sharing or reducing them to subsidize populations that can't afford the full cost. Concessions, joint ventures with nonprofits. We've also done joint ventures with private for profit. Scholarships in lieu of populations that cannot pay the full fee. Foundations, self-help, property tax levies. Advantage of using a levy is a levy can cover not only capital but operating costs as compared to a bond which can only do capital. And the last we've used is a number of times metropolitan park districts where the park commissioners already city council provided that the boundaries of the metropolitan park district coincide with city limits. What it gives you is a junior taxing capability to separately fund parks and recreation as opposed to making it a discretionary part of your general fund. This is R C O's composite level of service rating. When the plan is done and you submit it to the state for certification, they grade it, self grading in some respects, because we'll submit for this to not only qualify your plan, but qualify your competitiveness for grants. And what it's showing you is we're using three different ways to determine what your level of service should be and therefore the what we're aiming to achieve in your comprehensive plan. The first is quantitative. It's ratios related to some extent and saying what's the ratio of land or facilities to your population. And then we're also looking at what's the ratio as far as what you've invested in the past, what you're hoping to invest in the future. But there's a qualitative element to it as well. How functional are some of those parks? Or the park acreage? You may have a lot of it, but if it's not functionally capable, then it's not necessarily meeting with your objective. What are the amenities in it? Do the amenities match what your population residents wanna do? It doesn't match what your age structure is starting to become compared to what it was when you bought the park. Social equity of those parks and, and programs both available for populations who do not have the income or do not have or are disabled or do not have the ability physically to get to the parks which you're, which you're after. Then there's a distributional element. Can your residents walk to a park within, say, five or ten minutes throughout the city? Are there gaps in your park and trail distribution where there are dead zones in your city where people cannot easily get to those? And we look at the, and we, what we do is do a walkability map and we compare that walkability map with your social equities map and then back to your quantities to say, do we need to adjust for what we're going to do? So my point is we're looking for a composite of all these things, quantity, quality and distribution to come up with what we think is a, a sound and functional plan for you. And as we progress through this process, we'll be showing you how we score on these and how we each use each of these indices to come up with a viable plan option for you to critique and, and approve. I said it was short. We wanted to just introduce you to the main components, introduce you to some of the main ideas. You have any questions?
Does council have any questions?
Well, in that case, I like to say we'll be back. Progress through the process.
Jennifer does have a question.
Okay.
I do. So you had mentioned right at the beginning about having public, sorry, I have a headache, so I have my eyes closed when talking, public input at festivals and whatnot. A, the calendar was a little small, but I didn't see that and would assume as such, given most of our stuff was canceled. Are there specific opportunities that you're looking at to reach people in, in large groups? Maybe the summer concert series or something like that?
Yes, yes. I think that the, the technique we wanna use is, is use a multiple variety of tools. But rather than ask people to come to us, we wanna go to them. So anytime you're gonna have any gatherings in the summer and the fall, whether that's the ones which you normally do, I may not have been able to do with COVID. We wanna do what's called pop up events. We'll have our own little booth. We'll have wherever the progress is on the plan for people to look at. We'll have a little survey. What we really wanna do is hear from them, their ideas and their suggestions as we move along. We've not scheduled those yet, because we need to know just what events you're gonna have are virtual or not. I mean, are in person as well as virtual. And we may, in some cases, just go to your major parks during three day weekends and just see what we turn up.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing nobody, Tom, thank you very much for the presentation night and we look forward to hearing updates throughout the year and throughout the process. And I'm sure Matthew will definitely keep us up to date as well.
Great. Appreciate that. For, for Deuce, I didn't get say much tonight.
Thank you. My role was to make sure that Tom doesn't talk much.
Well, you did a good job. Thank you both for coming tonight. We really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you and we'll see you again.
Have a great evening.
You too.
All right, that concludes our public communications. And so we'll move into our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. This is the time to speak about anything that's on the agenda. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, R C W forty two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall and or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. With that, is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council at this time? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of our meeting. Let's move on to approval of a consent agenda and that is item C one through C five. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Christina and seconded by Joe to approve the consent agenda. Item C one through C five. I will call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
I.
Sean, how do you vote?
I.
Christina, how do you vote?
I.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
I.
Joe, how do you vote?
I.
Beth, how do you vote? Thank you, Beth. I see a thumbs up and I vote I, so it is unanimous to approve the consent agenda. Next up is reports of commissions. First up is the Arts Commission. And Patty. Welcome Patty. You are on mute.
Hello. All right, Marita is off celebrating her husband's birthday and asked me to step in. So today, briefly, we'll go over what we talked about at the last meeting. We did have a presentation from the company building the new bridge over Jenkins Creek Park and the artist renderings of ideas they brought. They were doing a fantastic job. They reviewed everything with us and we came up with some recommendations, things that we really felt like met the needs of the community and you will be receiving, if you haven't already received, our suggestions, you'll be receiving them shortly. Also, we are partnering with the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Committee. They have already joined one of our meetings. We're gonna be joining one of their meetings this week to continue collaboration on some projects that we have in the works. The first one being the next round of utility box wraps and we're really looking forward to working with them. We're also continuing to work to find grants to help assist our funding with some of the art projects that we have in mind. That's a slow process, but we're kind of waiting our way through it. We also have a rotating art call ready to go for the rotating art at C C P. We're just waiting for the, the go ahead to start placing or putting that art call out there, waiting for COVID to be over, basically. Because of COVID, we've been really trying to find new, new ways to reach out to people with art and we are still working on the virtual art show. We're super close, just down to the final last little tidbits of information we need to clarify and then we'll be, we'll be launching that program. We're really excited about that. And the summer theater camps that we have, our new art commissioner has helped set up are filling up fast. And so they've also set up a couple of summer concerts that we're super excited about. Things are really going well for their commission. And right now, there's a lot of, a lot of excitement about the things that are coming up. And we're really looking forward to what summer will bring. That's about it.
Thank you Patty. Does council have any questions for Patty? All right Patty, thank you very much and we look forward to all the great things that the Arts Commission is bringing forward. So thank you for everything you do. Please pass that on.
I will. Thank you.
Next is Economic Development Council. Do we have anybody here tonight from C D S? I don't see anybody in the audience, so we'll get an update next month. Next is Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. Manny, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Monty Domi. I am the chair for the E C S J Commission. No new updates. We haven't met since our, our last town hall that I was present in. We're meeting this Thursday, but just to reiterate, you know, we're still developing as a commission. We are partnering with the Arts Commission with our, just in terms of helping them with their project and trying to do an art call with more of a diversity outlook on it. So just helping them figure out and navigate that. And then also partnering with the indoor recreation feasibility study and then seeing how we could be of help in terms of communication and what that may look like for underrepresented communities in Covington. So just partnering with them and then see how we could, you know, promote their, their communication to, to get more data. Other than that, we are working our, on our own first project, which is to kinda see if we want to do a listening session versus a climate survey. Which climate surveys, as, as you may know, with situational assessments and all that, you know, they're more of a longer term or more of, you know, we need more maybe collaboration, obviously with the council, but also with agencies and what have you to come up with the survey. So I mean, that may just be, you know, in a long term sort So I mean, that may just be, you know, in a long-term sort of thing. But immediately, we could do things like the listening session and really to not just, you know, have a brand for the commission, since we're brand new, let people know who we are, but also like what is the need of the city. So more to come as we navigate, you know, trying to figure out if this is the route we go, how do we go about it? And then, you know, of course, come back to the council and make recommendations. So those are the things we're working on. Again, still developing as a commission, still developing as individuals who are part of the commission. Any questions for me?
Does council have any questions for Monty? Thank you very much for a great report, and we look forward to all the great things that your team is going to bring back to us, so thank you for everything. Please pass our thanks on to everybody on the commission as well.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
You as well, thank you. Next is Human Services Commission, Debbie Jacobson, welcome.
Hi there. Um, you guys have a long meeting this evening, so have try to shorten this up for you. The Human Services Commission has spent the last couple of months working on gathering information, ways we can best utilize that forty percent of House Bill fifteen ninety that can be utilized for can be allocated to the operation, delivery, and evaluation of mental health and behavioral health treatment programs and services or housing-related services for people that are at or below sixty percent of the median income level. Our primary goal, very similar to what it is when we go through the grant process, we're pretty well versed in it, is to find the most find the ideas, the uses that are going to have the most direct and lasting impact for Covington residents right here at home. This is a rare opportunity for us to be able to do that because a lot of the resources that we have funded and evaluated have all been outside of the city of Covington. This is our first opportunity potentially to keep some of those resources right here in town where we know where it's going to be utilized. So that's been an interesting part of the conversation. We've been looking at options that include either one substantial dedicated allocation to something really valuable to the community or multiple small allocations, even if that, you know, organizations that we give to now that really need extra funding to help with some of our key issues, like whether it's hunger or mental health, housing. And then, or a combination of both of things. So the last two months, two months, last month, we met with Chief McCurdy, and this this month in May, we met with Sergeant Roberts, and we gathered information from them about some of the the struggles that they see because they're actually going out with the community and interacting with a lot of these folks that are the most in need of services that fit this and so we talked, listened to them a great deal about where they see the gaps are in the way of mental health support, other social service and social work-oriented resources, and kind of what they, where they, what they felt at this point in time, and also the potential need and use of maybe a crisis co-responder for the police department that can help go on, be supportive on police calls where their mental health and other social service needs, which is a very common issue for them and a great deal, I believe. Our chief was saying that approximately two-thirds of the calls that are fit this category are actually happening on the swing shift in the evening. And they're incredibly time-consuming, and there are a lot of gaps associated with that where they people get to care or they don't, there's no follow-through, nobody closing loops on people getting where they need to go, so you end up with frequent flyers that take a great deal of our time on the police force. They both did share and emphasize these primary concerns. There's a need to close a loop between people who really need serious behavior health that are going through a crisis, the families struggling, and they're calling the police that can help them. But they need help between that person that needs help, the designated crisis responders and the hospitals to close the loops to that care so that these people don't just get end up in the emergency rooms endless numbers of times and sitting in the Covington Multi-Care Hospital. And they get, go home and nobody ever follows up with them. To have somebody that has, for for them, can actually go on these calls that are where these kinds of resources are needed and evaluate what's going on and build rapport with citizens here in town. Then what they can do is they can actually start building relationships and get to know these folks that are in these crises or use their relationships on people they they've never met, actually be able to step in and know exactly who they need to talk to because they've built those relationships with all those resources the city has already dedicated funding to. And they can also build relationships inside the hospital system, the structure that is really struggling, and we can have our own person that supports our families to help them get where they need to go. It's a really, really interesting and intriguing concept on that one. We did learn that one of the, just some of the bullets is learned that Covington Multi-Care is very under-equipped to deal with behavioral health issues. I actually shared a personal story of somebody that I helped in that situation. They don't have full-time social workers and I often have to call Auburn General to come over to provide assessment. Well, this is a regular occurrence for the police department and the people get dropped off at the hospital and they're not prepared for them, and it's a very long process and often they're sent home and there's no follow-up and they end up right back in the system again. So it's a, there's a lot to that. If we go down that road for conversation, I would be very happy to be a part of it. It's very interesting, especially being in healthcare. My organization is very much, it's like HealthPoint. We are the safety net for healthcare. And so I see the value of all of that. I see there's a question.
Sure, thank you. Well, so just along that same line, has anyone looked into the feasibility if we were to approve using some of that money to help provide a social worker that would go with the please, I mean, that's kind of like providing services if it falls enough into that bucket and or to help that person through the multi-care process to final services?
We are looking at that. We are being pretty thorough in what we're doing. There are some of the resources I'll mention tonight are that Mapleviney Place because they they are also a great safety net that serve, we give, have given quite a bit of money to in the past, but they serve so many needs and they've never turned a Covington resident away, for instance, right? So they have a lot of different services that are wraparound for these families to elevate them. The other one is Valley Cities, which I'll discuss as well, is another benef- beneficial program for people that are fit the description here. But on this one in particular, it's a little bit more homework because it's something that we haven't discussed as a group or fully evaluated, and we all have a different skill sets and knowledge base that we bring into this conversation about the value of that, whether it be a licensed mental health professional, which opens list of questions that several do to ask for the city's benefit, that if you're going to go down that hole, rabbit hole, you got to make sure you have talked to experts, other cities that have them to understand the things that you need to have in place for support. There's the social worker concept, having somebody with a social work degree because they actually are the great connector. You know, you get, you can screen for the right person with, that can work with all kinds of different people, seniors, children, you know, troubled youth, people you know, that have different mental health struggles or are just perpetually homeless. There are people out there like that that are social work, have social work degrees, not necessarily masters, you want the right person, not necessarily the right degree. So, yes, to answer your question and bring it back around is yes, we are really looking at these things and how much it would cost and what other cities have done for some of these different things that we're looking at. And again, I can't really say exactly where we're fully leaning on anything. We're just looking at all of them for their potential before making recommendations to the city. We take it very seriously. It's a tremendous, tremendous opportunity for us to help our citizens where we don't have resources right in town. So it is a, it is really important, especially after the survey pointing out the nature of mental health needs in support for our families across all demographics. It is all of us are struggling in one form or another, pretty much is what has come out of all that and providing the support we need when you're in crisis, so as a family. The other group was the Valley Cities Counseling. They're, and they're interested in possibly partnering with the city of Covington as well with some of that funding. They offer accessible behavioral health support in South King County. Julie had mentioned that we have that room at the city that some of the community services utilize, but it's underutilized. There is capacity to potentially have them there, you know, a day or two a week or some portion of time where we can have some form of mental health support right there at City Hall for somebody, or I don't know, they could be K-support or what, but that's a possibility. We're going to consider that as well as we look at that and how we're also predominantly looking at weighing out which ones have the most impact, lasting impact for the families, you know, on on a truly measurable scale, you know, and that we can look at and go, that was the best investment we could have made without money, knowing what we know about our our family's struggles. So whatever recommendations we make down the line when all this comes together in the coming months will be fully supported with why and what we looked at. We also looked at the potential job description wish wishlist if we did go with this coast support for the police department. And how that might, what that might look like and what the primary services would be, and also if it was Valley Cities. And then the why is why would we choose this? You know, for the city based, what needs does it fulfill and how many people could it potentially serve? And is it truly something that we can measure impact for accountability purposes and all that? So that alone has been a tremendous amount of discussion, and fortunately, we have a really talented group of people on our commission. We have an attorney, we have somebody who works with youth that have been in trouble and gets them in the workforce and gets them on their way. I work in healthcare, which is mental dental, medical dental, behavioral health and social work services. So we have Lydia, who's anything you can imagine with diverse communities. Amazing, a really interesting group, so everybody adds something to put into the the conversation. And we've reworked our work calendar once again. It's on pretty much every one of my minutes to you guys because we're accommodating this conversation, and it's taking quite a bit of time to do it, and it's worthwhile. Are there any questions about what we're doing or how we're going about it?
Jennifer?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm really excited and I appreciate you guys digging in and and really looking at all of the different options, and I really appreciate your comment about assessing measurable results and has the most impact. That's just not another Band-Aid. At least from my personal perspective, and I know council, when we decided to hold on to these funds here in the city, I believe, you know, and I never want to speak for everyone, but we wanted to see impact here in Covington for the residents here in in Covington. So I really appreciate you guys getting that and digging in. I was curious how you are assessing, what you did say, you know, looking at other cities and and what they're doing. How are you going about that particular piece?
We flat requested the job descriptions. Roles, they're not all the same. You can take an operations director job description, you know, and have get asked for everybody's and get ten different versions out of ten, you know, descriptions. So we're just looking at those different models. We've kind of for the, for for that particular role with the co-responder piece, that's the one that's much more in-depth and much more a very important thing for us to be evaluating carefully about what that looks like to utilize it well and make sure the city's prepared for what they need to do to support that kind of a role legally, everything, financially, all those things. So we got the job descriptions and first kind of put together loose list of high-level priorities. And then we're just starting to, just starting the conversation where we start looking at those job descriptions a little bit more in-depth, kind of find the ones that fit, highlight the ones that really tend to fit those priorities, deciding those instead of allowing those job descriptions to make the priorities for us.
Right, right. I know your, your, your survey had highlighted mental health as the highest concern, and I, I definitely am interested in that being the sole, if not primary focus of these funds. There is lack of access and extreme lack of access in our community, and I see it in your guys' fun, you know, funding recommendations specific to those types of services. We push them out to neighboring cities, and it would be nice to have something here, and I don't think that things are going to get better in the mental health arena, at least in the near term, and it would be great if we're in a proactive situation versus just the the continuous Band-Aids that we see happening in, you know, the rest of the world.
I really appreciate that. It's one thing that we have discussed at length is that one mental health provider, like where I work with us, you can only see handful of patients a day. At most, in your, there's a lot of responsibility with that, and usually that's if they're full-time too. You got to, you calculate all these things out and people need multiple follow-up appointments and stuff. One of the other things about this, this patient base that we would be looking at is is actually our organization's focal point and as a safety net, and they need so many other services so often that that's where the social worker we're looking at, you know, does it make more sense to get more of a an extraordinarily talented and committed, mission-driven, social worker with a great resume and have them with mental health background and all those, the the training and certifications in place that and then also have them be, do the social work piece where they're helping lead people these other resources. Most mental health folks are not necessarily going to be that person. They usually have staff in place to help do that, or they allocate, give them a brochure and stuff. We would like somebody potentially with the police officers that isn't, it's not always mental health. A lot of, you know, the mom I saw at Safeway one day was stealing food because, and she had two kids in the car that she couldn't feed, and she was stealing cheese and stuff next to me, and she got caught, and that was her story. I mean, that, this is where that social worker can step in and help, you know, connect them to all the different people they built relationships with, with all these organizations where and serve that many Covington residents. This is a way to get meet. One of our second biggest issues is that people that really need the resources don't know how to find them, or they're just not in a position to find them unless they come to them, and I always say meeting, meeting them where they're at. And that's, that's what this role would basically be partially responsible for in this kind of a shape and being able to go out there and help connect them with everything and actually tell them all this stuff because they're there while they're in crises. We don't, as a commission or any other things we do right now, we're not, it's, we're just tip of the iceberg is what we're able to touch. This is a larger scale. It is a, as far as excitement and stuff about, I mean, we are all giddy about this opportunity, and so we're putting a lot of, you know, knowing the mental health and the types of resources that we've seen, we've been in the community serving. We're actually working with these folks and have spent time with them and listened to them and asked their opinion, and it's been very enlightening over the last few years to to see that and to have an opportunity like this to potentially impact it and even have a voice in with the council to recommend is pretty awesome.
Thank you very much, Debbie. I really appreciate a great report and all the hard work that you and your team are doing on Human Services Commission, so thank you.
Likewise. Thank you so much, you guys. You can reach out anytime if you have questions.
Okay, have a great evening. Okay. Have a great evening, Debbie.
You too.
Next up is Parks and Recreation Commission, Laura Morrissey. Welcome.
Hi there. Good to see you. Very quickly, we had our meeting. We heard from Tom Beckwith, whom you also heard from tonight. He gave us more or less the same proposal that you saw with a little bit of additional information. So I'm not going to go through that again. Our second agenda item was the proposed park acquisition for the Zalesnik property, which is by the roundabout to add on to Jenkins Creek as potential parking restrooms and a park extension. The Parks Commission unanimously passed a motion in support of purchasing this property. We feel like that would be a very wise and responsible thing to do for this park and especially getting the frontage and the visual entrance to this park that really doesn't have anything would be very, very valuable. So we fully support the purchase of that property. Matt also presented on the Park Bench Dedication Program that you as the council have instructed him to go ahead and create. And he talked about needing a standard and quality and how this was going to be a program really for individuals to honor individuals not so much like causes or entities or things like that. And he proposed starting it in Jenkins Creek Park and the commission is in support of this program. And then the last thing we talked about is the summer commission meetings. The June meeting right now has been canceled due to a light agenda and to vacations scheduled for several commissioners. In July, we traditionally do a parks tour. But because of the Open Public Meeting Act and COVID restrictions coinciding, it's just not going to be legally possible for us to parks tour. So it is possible that the July meeting will be canceled as well, which I don't love doing that twice in a row. We're holding that lightly just in case things happen with the pros plan and there's something that needs the commission's attention or approval. So I'm just going to be done with that because this is a lot of meetings so far. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions for tonight? For Laura? Laura, thank you very much for a great report tonight and pass on our thanks to the entire commission.
Absolutely. Good night. Good luck.
Okay, thanks, Laura. Next up is our Planning Commission, David Cottle. Welcome.
Hi there. Takes a while to get it all in place once you get entered to the meeting. Good evening, Mayor and Council. How was great to meet with you. I'm, my name is David Cottle and I'm representing the Covington Planning Commission tonight. And I'm glad to provide you with a high level status report. The Planning Commission held one teleconference meeting since the last city council status report, and that was on May 20. The agenda for that meeting, including the continuation of the forming downtown's future and the related foreign base code initiative with the city code amendments. First, I need to give you a really brief history, recent history, because I think it'll tell you how we've been doing the work with staff consultants in the planning commission. September 17, 2020, we had a virtual open house on the Form Based Code. On February 4 of this year, 2021, we had a planning commission meeting, which gave us the overview of the first draft of the Form Based Code. On March 4, there was a community meeting also to provide an overview of the draft environmental impact statement. On March 18, the planning commission had a meeting on the details of the Form Based Code Articles 1 through 3 that included 1 was purpose, 2 was zoning, 3 was circulation's purpose. On April 15, we had a planning commission meeting on the detail of the Form Based Code Articles 4 through 6. 4 is the block frontage standards. 5 is the site planning standards and 6 was the building design standards. At the last planning commission meeting on May 20, we met to specifically discuss the State Environmental Policy Act, the SEPA infill exemptions and multifamily tax exemption, MFT proposed amendments. At that meeting, we had an excellent and succinct presentation provided by Ann Muller, the Covington Long Range Planner, and Lisa Gruder from the Principal Land Use Planner at Burke Consulting. I really to get you to understand what was covered in that meeting, I am going to use part of the five Ws. I know that Councilmember Porter and Hardthausen know that I like the five Ws for trying to keep track of what we're doing at the meetings. The who, what, where, when, and why. So to make it clear, what is the purpose of the proposed infill exemption and multifamily tax exemption amendments? The proposed SEPA infill exemption will allow the residential or mixed use development that is consistent with city regulations to not undergo new environmental reviews. Instead, the developer focus will focus on providing the housing that fits with the Form Based Code and meets other city code standards such as transportation transparency or critical area requirements, etc. Minor amounts of standalone commercial development will are also allowed to be exempt. Regarding the amendments to the MFT program, multifamily tax exemption program will require a mixed income housing development and supportive services if a development is pursuing a 12 year tax exemption for affordable housing and require green building standards for eight and 12 year tax exemptions. So that's the what. Now, why are we doing this? Well, updating the code was important because implementing the SEPA infill exemptions is intended to incentivize mixed use and multifamily housing development within the downtown zones. So what's next? Future schedule. There's target dates for this initiative. On June 17, the planning commission is targeted to have a public hearing and recommendation to the city council. On July of 2021, the Covington SEPA official will issue the final environmental impact statement. July 13, 2021, the city council will be getting a public hearing and potential amendment adoption. I know that's a lot in the schedule and we've been doing a lot of work through this effort throughout the year. I think it's a very important initiative that we continue to go forward with Form Based Codes for the downtown area in the City of Covington. And I would advise you to please take an opportunity to go to the following website for more information regarding the proposed amendments. That's covingtonwa.gov/downtownfuture. You'll find at that website, there are recordings of all of our meetings. So you can play them back. There's presentations that you can play back as well and see exactly what the Form Based Code really entails and the benefits associated with going that route. That completes the monthly planning commission report. Are there any questions?
Does Council have any questions for David? David, thank you very much for a great report. I really appreciate it. We all appreciate it. And please pass on our thanks to the planning commission.
Glad to do that.
Thank you for coming tonight, David.
Have a good evening.
Next up is Youth Council, Joshua. I see you out there. You giving the report tonight? Welcome.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, Council. My name is Joshua Nielsen and I'm a member of the Covington Youth Council. Some of the topics on our agenda that we talked about last week were the Teens for Tupilla Leadership Summit. It went great. A few of our members attended. They discussed topics that are affecting youth in our community and how we should address them. We also talked about how to recruit new members because we have a few seniors leaving us this year. We decided that we would ask to have a spot on the Weekly Bulletin at Kentwood and Kent Lake. We are also going to ask to be on Kong TV at Kentwood. Because we have a few people leaving this year, we discussed what elections in our own council would look like. They might be a little different if we aren't able to go back in person by then, but most likely we think we're going to be in person. We decided to postpone our next meeting and have a COVID safe picnic at the Covington Community Park to celebrate the seniors that are leaving us this year. It's going to take place on the normal Tuesday that our meeting would have been. And that's pretty much it. We have some future items up for discussion like possibly doing an art project and or performing arts event at the CCP Amphitheater that we are going to be discussing soon. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Joshua. Does anybody have any questions for Beth?
Hi, Joshua. Yeah, quick question. Were you all planning a color run or some kind of a fun run? Is that still a thing or is that on the back burner?
Um, yeah. So as far as I know, we had to cancel that. It was either just because of COVID or I think we discussed it with the city attorney. And there was some kind of complication with that. So we had to cancel that event, but it could possibly come up later in the next year, you know, possibly. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Joshua, thank you for a great report and please pass our thanks on to the entire Youth Council. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. That concludes our reports of commissions. We'll move on to new business item number one, presentation of the art design element of the 516 Bridge over Jenkins Creek. Mr. Linskoff.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thanks for allowing us this opportunity. One thing I learned, if you want to fully dilate an engineer's eyes, ask him to design art. So we originally took on this art task and it seemed insurmountable at first, but Don was able to get us through towards some relationships with our Parks Group and with our consultants. And and we met Karen Keist and and she of Karen Keist Landscape Architects and and she got us through this whole process and she's going to present tonight. I think you will be very pleased what what she's presented and what the Arts Commission, some of the feedback they have given. So thank you. I think she's there. Can't hear her yet. I see you coming in and out, Karen, but we can't hear you.
Not sure if Karen can hear us. There is also a phone number that she could call into if we need to do it that way. She won't be able to share her screen necessarily.
See, my eyes are fully dilated now. Hey Krista, could you email her that phone number real quick? Oh, I see it here.
Are you already working on it then or otherwise?
Yeah, I'm sending her right now.
Thank you.
It looks like she's sharing her screen.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Let me try one more thing. Well, I'll just speak directly to the screen. Sorry about that. Pleased to be here. Are you able to see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. Let me get started then. We're pleased to share with you our work to date on the 516 art effort associated with the new bridge. And others have spoken very well of it tonight, so I'll go through this quickly. And sorry for some of the technical difficulties, but here is the extent of our project. It runs from the Jenkins Bridge replacement to 185th. And we've included Karma the Chameleon here. I came to know him through the Arts Committee a little bit ago as a scale model to give you a sense of the bridge and how it will be passing over the creek. You can see down there in the section that there's will be a trail that goes underneath the creek as part of the reconstruction. And we've been working with the Arts Commission for quite a while. These were some of the very inspiring sketches that were given to us previously that sort of shared what they think of with Jenkins Creek, including several examples of native plants, but also the little critters in the upper left. So all of the kind of creek fauna and flora. We've also been working with the city on understanding better some of the metal elements and the potential for artwork associated with the metal on the bridge. And here are some examples of things that we looked at that we thought were helpful as a starting point. Most of these are laser cut panels. And over the last several years, the technology has continued to improve. Very impressed with the recent work at Mainenbauer Bay Park overlooked that image in the middle. And also in Kenmore, the upper images, just sort of the simplicity of that form. Here's looking at inspired by your Jenkins Creek Park Bridge that's treated in weathering steel. We also call it Corten, which is a, I think, a commercial name. You can see here are some of the examples of how laser cut steel can be artistically used in also a very practical way with either fencing or gates or railings. And so these are various examples, many of them from China weathering steel. And actually, the lower left image, which is sort of abstracted circles is one that we we are looking at, as you'll see. We we took as an inspiration, learning a little bit more about the history of Covington and just appreciating that the namesake for the city is the Covington lumber company, which is downstream from the Jenkins Creek in Seuss Creeks where they come together. And this this inspiration of about the original town history as appreciating the natural resource and and the transformation with the mills is something that sort of really struck struck a positive chord when thinking about the creek. And you can see there an image on the left and on the right is sort of seeing how that same image can be abstracted into a pattern of old growth tree rings. So we're looking at using that in a strong fashion for the railings that are associated with the bridge proper. You can see there in the lower image is how it would look like if it was applied across the bridge and a repeating pattern of these tree rings. We also have been looking at the railings beyond the bridge. It it we sort of considered that the treatment of just the bridge itself, maybe with the Corten or weathered steel. And then there are several railings beyond the bridge to consider guardrails. And so we asked the Arts Commission their input. We looked at whether to consider this this recent project we we completed here in Seattle for the Magnolia pump station. We we drew and traced images of various shore creatures and had an assortment of them attached to fairly standard issue rail. Shore creatures and had an assortment of them attached to fairly standard issue railings. So we looked at the middle image as saying, how might we use that and apply various creek critters? To the railings that are associated beyond the bridge. And then the lower image was also inspired. By the Arts Commission, let us know that you actually. Are responsible for the state's mascot, the dragonfly, which is the state insect. And I don't think I knew that until presenting to the Arts Committee. And here's some of the actual. Drawings from Crestwood Elementary School that helped secure the state recognition for. The dragonfly. So there was strong support from the Arts Commission to use as one repeated. Creek image of the dragonfly for the railing details, much simpler and very well understood. In Covington. The next image is sort of showing how that would work along the bridge. You can see the outer rails. Might have this dragonfly patterning whereas the primary bridge has the. Pattern of the Douglas fir. The last element that relates to the bridge is the. Treatment of the walls that form the base of the bridge. And on the left, you can see we sort of looked at a, this is again inspired by various. Treatments that you have near you. The State Route eighteen did a very elegant. Branch and leaf pattern several years ago. It was really compelling. And Vicki Scurry, the artist who's working with you on your other development within Covington to the north on the quarry. Those are some of her panels for the I five. I was kind of impressed with the the actual old growth as a as a. As a image. And this was a little boy at the Visitor Center at Mount Rainier National Park and. It's just always awe inspiring at the actual size of some of the original old growth. So we looked at images on the left of say of tree branches and the lower right, we looked at. Looking at the actual tree. In cross section and we were given very strong support for the actual tree. As something that could be used in a repeating pattern as possible for the bridge area. So those are the the primary components is looking at the bridge railing, the railings beyond and the tree. Tree images along the bridge itself. We've prepared a complete planting plan for the project. And just to let you know, we wanted to kind of emphasize the creek. And really kind of distinct from most projects that have street side planning. We are proposing all creek related native plants. Along the creek, which will really be distinct compared to your standard. Thought of roadside planting. And also there is a considerable restoration planting that's going along with the creek proper, which is. Underneath the bridge area. So when you see this area that is the bridge, you will see. This. Plantings that go on either side of the bridge and Diana Hammer, who's here on the call with me, has completed all this work. Sort of an irregular planting of. Natural native forest plants and then the trail continues down along and underneath. Not underneath the creek, underneath the bridge. So people will really have an opportunity to see the investment in the restoration of the creek. And to experience this close up. When we get beyond the creek, heading east, we really thought it would be fun to distinguish from the creek planties. And have something more colorful. We also received really great feedback from the city saying that. I believe yourselves had had strongly supported redoing some of your city medians to be a little bit more. Colorful and informal with more perennials and more grasses and a little bit. Looser planting pattern. So we took that to heart and you can see we have street trees, but we also have. Much more perennials and colorful plants than we normally would within a street planting. And these represent plants that you also have in your commercial area closer to State Route eighteen. So that that includes a strip of land. That goes quite far all the way to one hundred eighty fifth and you know, it's hard for you to see on this plan. But we just want you to know that this investment will basically. Renew the entire segment of the roadway all the way to one hundred eighty fifth. I think that's one hundred eighty fifth right there. So that's our presentation. Primarily the the bridge as the starting point and. Thank you. I'm glad I was able to speak directly to computer.
Thank you, Karen. And just to reiterate, at this time, I think we'd like to open it up for any questions you guys may have. Yes. I see.
Share your screen so I can see the council members, please. Jennifer, do you have a question?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Not really questions, just comments. Many, many years ago, I was on arts when we talked about this. So super exciting. And you know, I'm a big fan of the medians. I drive a lot around town because I have a lot of kids. And it brings it as a resident, it brings me joy. As the mayor was pointing out yesterday evening. We have the Covington crawl. I this and we talked about it on arts years ago. How having. Really something that's aesthetically pleasing as you're backed up in that area. I mean. That is one of the major pinch points in Covington and not that just making it pretty is the fix. Obviously, we have Covington Connector. That's that's going to heal that area, but this. This is a beautiful, I'm very impressed. Thank you for all the work. Also looking forward to that pedestrian. Underpass so people can safely cross there and can't wait to see it. So yeah, just comments. Great. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I thank you. I'm thank you for the presentation. That was those great. Excited for seeing some of that that artistic work that's. Form and function combination. That's I love that. Was there any talk about any water wise planting in that median strip? I know what I it seems like what we have now is going on by sixteen through Covington. We we had that David. Verburnham in there and of course it didn't do very well and it was, you know, well underplanted. It didn't have enough space to grow. Was that part of the, I wasn't part of the the planning on that or?
Yeah, we always evaluate using drought tolerant plants and we moved toward that, but we decided to irrigate it anyways. Because of the summers we've been having and trying to keep a contractor on the hook for a year. Has been pretty, pretty difficult. We get the maintenance period, but it ends up our city staff, our maintenance crews ends up doing the watering. So we found it just easier to irrigate the stuff as it develops.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody else have any questions? Alright, Karen and Bob, thank you both for a great presentation. We look forward to the progress on this. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Karen.
Next up is to new business item number two, consider appointments to the openings of the Arts Commission. I do have a question for Mark on this. One of the positions is currently held by a youth and we've eliminated that youth so. She's in position number four. If we were to choose to reappoint her, can we put her into. A three year position like position number five instead of having to put her into four, which is a partial term.
So let me get this straight. So Liliana Fernandez. Is completing the position as the youth term and now she's has she no longer qualified? Did she aged out of being in the youth position? Is that?
No, she still has one more year in high school, but we don't have one year positions anymore. So. We see here that she can move into like a position four would be a partial term replacement. But can we put her in for a three year term?
You know what? I'm gonna have to look at the youth council's rules on that before I can. Answer and I apologize. I need to dig into that real quickly. So if you could maybe discuss some of the other. Some of the the other positions that you're looking at and then I'll follow up with you about that one.
Okay, so this is Arts Commission?
Yes.
And this is a youth person who we used to have a youth one year position on the arts, but we no longer have. One year positions.
Perfect. And maybe Ethan can answer this question off the top of his head.
Yeah, I can provide a little clarification. I believe that the youth positions were removed. With the intention that you could still appoint a youth age person to just a regular position. I think that's across the board for all the commissions, so.
That's that's what I thought we did, but I wanted to clarify that. So. If we chose to reappoint Lily, we can put her into a position five, a three year position instead of a partial term.
That's correct.
That's my understanding.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to clarify that before we went into appointments for the position.
Okay, thank you Reagan and Ethan for stepping in there.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so we have four open positions. We have four interviews tonight. We can choose to fill one, two, all of the positions. Does council wish to take action tonight?
Yes, I would like to move to appoint Patty Melton to. Gosh, I don't have my position.
She's currently in position seven.
Okay, I would like to appoint her to position seven expiring in May twenty twenty four.
Okay, it's been moved by Jennifer and seconded by Beth to appoint Patty Melton to position number seven. For a three year term on the Arts Commission with a term expiring May thirty first, two thousand twenty four. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I have worked with Patty in the past, actually on, you know, various organizations. She brings a lot of creativity, ideas, hard work, passion and a lot of positivity. She's a great asset to the Arts Commission and I look forward to her continuing and I'm excited that she's willing to continue and put in the time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, just to to add on to what Councilmember Harthouseen had said, I I really appreciate what. Patty's responses were when it comes to a focus on. Different forms of art, performing art. And programming and particularly getting youth involved and providing some of those opportunities. I think that's. That's a key component to what we can do as a city to help move art forward and build that sense of community.
Thank you, Beth. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Patty Melton to fill position number seven for a three year term on the Arts Commission. The term expiring May thirty first, two thousand twenty four. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous to appoint Patty Melton to fill position number seven. Does council wish to take any further action tonight?
Sure, I will motion to appoint Jessica. Sorry, I have too many screens. Breeden to fill position number six with the term expiring May thirty first, twenty twenty four.
I'm seconding.
Okay, it's been moved by Jennifer and seconded by Christina to appoint Jessica Breeden to fill position number six. For a three year term on the Arts Commission with a term expiring May thirty first, two thousand twenty four. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think that Jessica's enthusiasm for her current work on the arts was evident. She's really excited about. What they have going on and definitely pointed it out to us numerous times. They would appreciate increased funding and I love it when commission members are, you know, clear, direct and let us know what they need.
Thank you, Jennifer. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
I just wanna add that she. Her most important function of the Arts Commission was just to get the art out into public and to get public out art and. Incorporate artists of our of our wonderful city. So I think she's fantastic. She's already the secretary and she seems like she's doing a wonderful job.
Great. Thank you, Christine. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Jessica Breeden to fill position number six for a three year term on the Arts Commission. With a term expiring May thirty first, two thousand twenty four. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote? Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is unanimous to appoint Jessica Breeden to fill position number six. Does council wish to take any further action tonight?
Sure, I would like to move to appoint Liliana Fernandez to fill position number five for a term expiring May thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
It's been moved by Jennifer and seconded by Sean. To appoint Lily Fernandez to fill position number five for a three year term on the Arts Commission with a term expiring May thirty first, two thousand twenty four. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, Liliana has stuck with it, applying every year and I would love to give her the gift of just serving like everybody else. Not that, you know, we don't love to to see her every year. But she works hard. She brings ideas and teamwork to the team. She said that, you know, she's still looking forward to serving on the commission. And wants to expand events, loves collaborating with the different commissions. And I'm looking forward to her continued work.
Thank you, Jennifer. Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, I'd just say I was really impressed with Liliana's excitement and passion and dedication to serving on the Arts Commission. And I really appreciated her answer related to, you know, what's the most important function of the Arts Commission is to create community. So I think. I think she's a great addition and yeah, I'm gonna support her.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Liliana Fernandez. Fill position number five for a three year term on the Arts Commission with a term expiring May thirty first, two thousand twenty four. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote? Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is unanimous to appoint Liliana Fernandez to fill position number five. Does council wish to take any further action tonight? Hearing no one make any motions, we will have a position available that we can continue to interview for. With that, we'll move on to new business item number three. Which is the appointment of voting delegate for Association of Washington Cities. Two thousand twenty one annual business meeting and. Reagan or Krista, are you giving this presentation or would you like me to take it?
So are you going to do that?
I certainly can, but I was thinking that you or or the mayor may do that.
Yeah, go ahead, Krista.
Okay, um, so for the AWC annual business meeting, we do have. Mayor Redner, Councilmember Porter, and then our city manager, Regan Bulleye, attending the AWC conference. So I believe that we can. So um I believe that we can delegate up to three delegates for voting purposes.
So, thank you, Krista. And so the annual meeting is being held Thursday, June twenty fourth from ten to twelve virtually. And so with the three of us attending, um I'd look for a motion to appoint the three of us as voting delegates um to represent the City of Covington at the two thousand twenty one Association of Washington Cities Annual Business Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I think it was Jared was the first and Sean was the second to appoint myself, Mayor Wagner, Councilmember Porter, and City Manager Regan Bulley as the voting delegate to represent the City of Covington. Jared, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think you guys will do a wonderful job representing the City of Covington.
Thank you, Jared. Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
Uh, Jared said exactly what I was gonna say, so.
Okay, is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Mayor Wagner, Councilmember Porter, and City Manager Regan Bulley as the voting delegate to represent the City of Covington at the two thousand twenty one Association of Washington Cities Annual Business Meeting. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Beth, how do you vote?
Am I allowed to vote?
Yes.
Okay, aye.
And I also vote aye. It is unanimous to appoint the three of us as your voting delegate. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. Next up is new business item number four, the two thousand twenty one first quarter financial report. Casey.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I'm gonna share my screen so the audience can see what you guys see with the quarterly report here. All right, does that look okay? Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
All right, and everybody can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so uh just first quarter summary, um just walking through kind of fund by fund, just a higher level before we kind of dig into the detail. For the general funds, our total revenues for first clu- uh first quarter excluding transfers in, they're a little bit below budget estimates at twenty one point four percent of budget at this time of year. Um that's actually normal. Uh, for some funds, twenty five percent because it's a quarter, maybe normal, but for us, this is uh this is normal because our property taxes don't generally come in until second quarter. So for total expenditures, excluding transfers out, um we are below as budget estimate of ten point two percent. Again, this is actually normal for us because our police services bills don't come in until second quarter as well. For the street funds, uh total revenues excluding transfers were below budget estimates at twenty three point six percent. And this this number is actually a little bit lower um from last year over last year's numbers, and I'll get into a little bit more, but it's our fuel taxes a little bit. For total expenditures, uh excluding the transfers out again, um we're at twenty one point five percent of budget. This is actually a little higher than last year, but still under the twenty five percent that we expect. For development services, um this one looks a little weird because it says we're at a hundred fifty percent of budget. So what happened here is um after our budget was adopted last year, we were still under audit. And our audit actually wasn't completed until December thirty of of last year, so it was a a crazy year. But um we had a couple of revenue changes. We had our fire impact fees and our school mitigation fees that are now considered revenues and expenditures. So um this looks a little funny because it says it's a hundred and fifty percent of budget. But if I was to take those two items out of the revenues, we're still at sixty percent of budget for the Development Services Fund. So they are um really doing well so far for this quarter. Uh, total expenditures, um we're at sixty four point five percent of budget. And again, this uh is showing so much more because we're also paying out those impact fees to the fire district and the school district. So if I was to remove those two, two, we're at eighteen percent of budget. So for the swim fund, uh total revenues excluding the transfers were at three point four percent of budget. And again, this is a normal, that's a normal amount for this time of year because they're on drainage utility fees are on the same timeline as the property taxes. So we don't see those revenues come in until second quarter. Uh, for total expenditures, excluding the transfers, we're at fourteen point five percent of budget. Um, perfectly normal for this time of year, actually even a little bit under where we were last year. So, skip down to property taxes here. So property taxes, again, since they're due on April thirtieth and October thirty first of each year, we don't really see our major distributions until early May and in November. But through first quarter, we've collected a hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty six. Again, it's a little bit higher than it was for last year, but we are levy is also higher for last year, so that's why our collections are up a little bit. For twenty twenty, um our levy is actually two point nine million. And our levy rate is just under a dollar at ninety six cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. Our sit- our assessed value has actually gone up um to three point one billion. And it's an increase of seven point nine percent over the previous year. For the real estate excise taxes, uh through first quarter collections, we're at forty seven point six percent of budget. Um, it's a hundred and four thousand dollars higher than twenty twenty or forty six percent higher. There were forty two new home sales, seventy five existing home sales, one commercial sale, one building sale, and three lot sales. And I will mention just a year to date, we just got some our most recent REIT numbers on a cash basis. We're actually at a hundred and four percent of our budget already. Um, we've brought in to date seven hundred and thirty two thousand dollars worth of REIT excise tax. So those uh home sales are really helping us out and keeping those revenues coming in. For the retail sales and use taxes, um total collections are at thirty point four percent of budget, so we're actually a little bit higher uh than normal collections. Comparing each category to the first quarter of twenty twenty, our retail sales are coming in at forty po- forty point seven percent higher. Construction at fifteen point four percent higher. Food services are coming in a little bit lower at six point five percent. But we're expecting to see those start to pop back up now that the restrictions are less. All other categories were up uh forty one point nine percent. Um, for utility taxes, there's not a lot difference between this year and last year. First quarter is up by just a little over four thousand dollars or point seven percent. Utility taxes stay pretty stable from year to year, so we don't see a lot of changes. So for the general fund, um our operating revenues, again, as I mentioned, are at twenty one point four percent of budget. Uh, total expenditures are um actually down from the same time last year, eighteen point nine percent. And overall, we've spent ten point two percent of our budget. And there's just a couple of departments that I just wanted to call out. Everybody is falling right in line with where they should be this time of year. But you can see Central Services is at thirty four point two percent of budget. And that's only because we have a couple of large bills that occur first uh at the beginning of the year, like our insurance payments to WCIA. So that you'll see that kind of come back in line for second quarter. And then the only other one was, um you'll see I have a negative here under disaster and recovery. And there was just a little um refund that we had received from some work done at the testing site. So for public works, for the street fund, uh the total operating revenues again are twenty three point six percent of budget. Um, so that also includes Comcast franchise fees. They're right at um budget, they're at twenty five point seven percent, so right in line. Gas taxes, as I mentioned, they're still coming in a little bit lower than budget estimates, they're at twenty one point four percent. Um, and are down over the twenty twenty um collections from last year. Our motor vehicle license fees, our TBD fees are um down two point five percent. Um, total expenditures excluding the transfers out are at twenty one point five percent of budget, so those are still under that twenty five percent threshold. Uh, street operating revenues are generally less than our operating expenditures. And our operating transfers that come from the general fund help offset that um deficit. So for the swim fund, um the swim fund is is primarily funded to those drainage fees. And again, they're on the same schedule as the property taxes. So uh the total levy for this year is three point two million. And again, total operating revenues at three point four percent. Because they follow that property tax timeline, we won't see those revenues start to come in until second quarter. So for total expenditures, excluding transfers out, we're at fourteen point five percent. So again, right in line. Uh, development services, total total revenue, again, this is one that looks kind of funny, again, we're at a hundred and fifty percent of budget. Um, the number of permits for single family residents are eighteen as compared to twenty um in twenty twenty, so still super close. For all permit categories, there were a hundred and twenty five permits issued this year compared to a hundred and four in twenty twenty. And I just had this interesting little tidbit that I thought I would share. Um, so the hundred and twenty five permits, the valuation that comes with those permits for this year is actually fifty five point seven million compared to last year, those hundred and four permits, when we had eight point six million for valuation. And that's because we had a big multifamily that station by vintage come in in February, so um the permits are super comparable, but the valuations are hugely hugely different. So for operational expenditures, again, we're at that sixty four point five percent because of paying out those school impact fees and fire impact fees. And also, just as a side note, school impact fees, we've collected over five hundred and thirty five thousand year to date. And again, have submitted those to the schools for their CIP projects. And for fire impact fees, we've collected over six hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. So a lot of money is coming through the city. Whoop, I forgot to scroll down, sorry about that. So for aquatics, recreation, and cultural arts, um the first quarter budget to actual aquics revenues were at nineteen point seven percent of budgets. And recreation and cultural arts were at seventeen point eight percent of budget. And just a reminder, we did ratchet down those budgets this year due to uh COVID. Um, we actually uh have slowly been ratcheting them up till the end of the year, but never quite getting back to what our twenty nineteen levels were. So we took a real conservative approach this year. Uh, for operating expenditures, aquatics came in at fifteen percent of budget, and recreation and cultural arts came at twelve point three percent of budget. But the exciting news is if you look at the aquatic center splash count, you can see for March that our March splashes exceeded last year. So that's exciting news that we're on the right track and starting to improve. So for cash and investments, um our total cash and investments for first quarter were just a little over thirty million dollars. Uh, this is an increase from last year of over six million dollars. The largest gainers are the general fund, development services fund, CIP, and the swim fund. And we do have a lot of our um excess cash pool with the local government investment pool. We have a little over twenty four point eight million dollars sitting there. And we're earning a whopping zero point one one percent interest on those funds. Um, we've got four point nine pers- or four point nine million in investments outside of the LJP, hoping to outpace the LJP interest on those. So for the capital investment program, I'll just hit a couple things here. So like I mentioned, with those school impact fees and the fire impact fees, we're also collecting fees that we get to keep. And those are the GMA mitigation fees or transportation impact fees and the parks family um and park impact fees. So we collected a little over six hundred and eighty one thousand dollars in the GMA mitigation fees and five hundred and ninety three thousand in the parks fee, new and parking pack fees so far this year. And then I won't go over all of the CIP activity, but our major project right now that's really um has a lot of activity running through it is obviously the two hundred and fourth connector. So you can see the year to date revenues and year to date expenditures there. And then also not a lot of movement in our um bonds. Our first payment isn't due until November of this year, so our current balance is the five million eight hundred and forty five thousand. And the bonds are scheduled to be paid off in twenty twenty seven. And then we also have the Pocahontas Trust Fund loan with that eight hundred and fifty nine thousand dollar balance scheduled to be paid off in twenty twenty four. And again, as always, we've just got a little bit more of a detailed information here if you're interested um by fund by category. Um, this will be one to watch. We're excited that we've got some numbers here to report. So that's exciting for the recreation programs. Um, and just the rest of the funds here, we've got the street fund and development services fund and the swim fund. And that is it. Does anybody have any questions I can answer?
Thank you, Casey. Does counsel have any questions for Casey on the first quarter financial reports? Christina.
It's definitely not a question, but we are doing pretty good. Thank you, Casey, for the amazing presentation.
Thank you. Yes, we are. Things are actually going relatively well, so it makes me excited to see some more numbers.
And thank you to how you manage all all the whole team manages it. I know we wouldn't be here without you guys, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Does anybody else have any questions for Casey? All right, thank you, Casey. Appreciate the great report. Uh, next up is Mark.
Thank you, Mayor Wagner. Um, Reagan reminded me that um if the meeting, it looks like it's going to go past ten o'clock. We need a motion and a majority vote of counsel to extend the meeting beyond that time period. And it looks like we're going to likely exceed ten PM, so if counsel so chooses, we can either take that vote or the council meeting will adjourn and things will roll over the next meeting for the remainder of the items.
So the remainder of the items, we're looking at possibly what, ten thirty, ten forty five? Depending on discussion.
That that seems reasonable to me.
I think so.
Does counsel wish to extend the meeting to ten forty five?
So moved.
Uh, wishing and having to, uh two different things. Second.
We've been uh blessed with very short meetings lately, so starting at five thirty tonight and running till ten forty five. Um, so it's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting to ten forty five. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
More convincingly, aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Do I have to vote aye? Yes, I vote aye. So it's unanimous to run, extend the meeting to ten forty five if needed. All right, let's move on to new business item number five, discuss options for posting city council meeting recordings online for increased accessibility to the public. Krista.
Yes, thank you, counsel. So um few meetings ago, you requested for us to bring this back as a proposal. Um, just a little background. In the past four years, we've received very few requests from the public regarding meeting recordings. Um, as of the time that I prepared this agenda bill, there were no um requests for this year. However, I did receive one following um creation of this agenda bill, and that was just from our lobbyist requesting a meeting recording. Uh, most of our requests actually come from council members or commissioners. Most of the time, it's just because they have maybe been absent from a meeting. That's not to say that the public would not view those meeting recordings if they had the ability to. Um, so then just looking at time that it takes for our staff, it's probably gonna take about fifteen to thirty minutes for recording for staff members to um upload those recordings online. Um, so our proposal is to just post the um regular meetings and then special meetings, including study sessions, but not including the recordings of interviews unless counsel specifically requests for that to be done. Um, we would add a new section on the city website in the same area that the minutes and agendas are posted. Um, however, we would actually just use a URL that would link to our YouTube channel so that it would not slow down our webpage by just uploading all the files. Um, also, commenting would be turned off for all of those recordings um or all those postings on the YouTube channel so that we wouldn't um deal with any kind of public records requests or public records um issues there. Um, if you would like to move forward with this, I would also just like to know if we want to begin with this meeting's recording or if we want to go back um to the beginning of the year or um an another date. And I'll open it up for a council discussion.
Does counsel have any questions? Does counsel have any questions or comments? Joe?
How long are we supposed to keep recordings for meetings to begin with? What's the, what's the statute on that?
I may see if Mark would know that. I know that with like the meeting minutes and meeting agendas, I think that we have to keep them for six years. Not sure about the recordings.
I don't know that answer off the top of my head. I'll look it up and see if I can find it while you're continuing your discussion.
Okay.
Next, my next question would be, and I'm sure we covered, covered all this through Mark and all these things. But I think I would be doing a disservice if I didn't ask. Turning off commenting on the YouTube channel for for these things, is that legal? Are we, can we, can we really do that when it comes to something from government?
Yes. So so long as everyone has equal access and we're conforming to our standard policy or treating everything the same in that situation, turning off the comments poses no issues.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I knew, I'm sure someone else thought that question. I'd just be the one to ask it. And then if we were to do it, I would suggest that we said, we bring this back with some very strict guidelines on it to making sure that we're doing this in the best clarity. And we're not, we're showing that we're trying to be as transparent as possible. So it's all I have.
Thank you, Joe. Beth?
Hi, thank you, mayor. I appreciate what the effort that staff went into pulling this together. I I like the proposal. I like the staff's proposal and just having a, having a URL so people can access it with no commenting. It's more about giving out information and if people have a concern or a thought, they can email the council. And I would suggest not necessarily going back in time to post things, just moving forward. And yeah, I don't know how long you'd want to retain the video on, on a YouTube channel, how much that takes, but I don't know that we need to keep it up for six years, but what that would look like. I don't know, maybe a year.
And I'll just add, our retention isn't necessarily tied to YouTube. So yeah, we could leave them up for a year on YouTube, but then we would still retain them on our records.
Sure, sure, sure.
Thank you, Beth. Mark, did you want to jump in?
Yes, just to answer that question, the core local government common records retention schedule states that all audio and visual recordings and transcripts of meetings, the city is required to hold on to those for six years and then they're archival. So then they're transferred to the Washington State Archives for permanent retention. So we're required to hold on to them for six. As Krista pointed out, that has nothing to do with the YouTube channel itself because the city still maintains those records and then after six years transfers them. So they are permanent archival. So what we're doing here today will eventually be transferred to the Washington State Archives as a permanent record.
Thank you, Mark. Sean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I agree with Beth. I think this, I like the proposal. I think it's, it's something we probably should and need to do. I appreciate Krista, the point about very few people asking for this, but I think actually that's a burden on some people to actually ask. If it's on the website, you'll probably see a few more people clicking on it. And I just did a quick look at what our neighboring cities are doing. Kent and Auburn already link there and record their city council meetings and put that up on their website. And Maple Valley says they record theirs as well, although I couldn't find them. So our neighboring communities are already doing this. And I think it's, I think in the spirit of transparency and in wanting to improve access to our residents' government, I think it's the right thing to do. So.
Thank you, Sean.
Yep.
Anybody else have a question? I do have a question. So if it, when we go back to in person and we're not videoing this anymore, we're not on Facebook, if that's what we do, are we just posting the audio of the meetings then onto our YouTube?
I believe that would be the case if we do go back to fully in person. I know that at some point, if we do go back in person, there may still be a virtual element required. So we would still be including that, that video portion. And Regan might have some input on that as well.
Well, Chris is right. We have I T right now, looking at different options to where we can provide a virtual element to the meetings. It's going to require some investment financially to do that. So it's something we'll, we'll discuss and bring back to council. I suspect in the near future, we will be able to meet in person without a virtual element, but we've not yet received that guidance.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Krista, what do you need from us tonight?
I guess council consensus would be nice if you want to move forward with this tonight. Otherwise, I guess if there's further questions, we can always come back with with some more information for you.
So is there consensus from council to move forward with this tonight? Okay, I see everybody shaking their heads. So do you need a motion or is this just coming back at a future date to for us to make a motion on it? Or do you need even a motion for this to do this?
I, I would say with the consensus we got, we can just start doing it.
Okay, thank you.
And I just, I just want to clarify, it sounded like we would just start with this tonight's meeting.
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. Thank you. That concludes new business item five. So let's move on to new business item number six. The discussion regarding the city nepotism policy and whether to amend the code of ethics to allow relatives of council members to serve on the Covington Youth Council. Mark?
Thank you very much, Mayor Wagner. As you'll recall, at your April twenty seventh meeting, council discussed this issue and has discussed it several times previously throughout the course of the year. And at the last meeting where this was brought up, council wanted to have, think about a little bit more and have this brought back for further consideration before taking any action one way or another. And to, I don't have a lot to add to the previous presentations that I've given on this topic and previous guidance that I've given to council. But I did want to follow up on Mayor Pro Tim Smith's question about whether other agencies do anything like this. And I found two examples that are not directly on point, but will hopefully illuminate this for council a little bit more. Maple Valley includes an exemption related to its youth council to be a point for council members, relatives to be appointed to the youth council. But they have a very specific youth council that has non-voting positions because they wanted to make sure, and they stated this there, is they were only allowed to appoint relatives to the youth non-voting positions to avoid the appearance of favoritism and to increase community representation. So they have a non-voting, they have non-voting delegates and alternates that are appointed to their commissions across the board. The only other thing that I found that was remotely close to this, but still not directly on point was Bainbridge Island's ethics code includes a process that a council member can request a waiver from their established ethics board to, for a waiver from the general prohibition against employing, the city employing the council members, family members. So again, not directly on point, but those are the only two codes that I could find that created, try to create some kind of exception for council members' families within the nepotism policy for either appointment or employment. So I'd be happy to field any questions the council has. Otherwise, I think this is just up for council discussion and then trying to give a little direction to me as to where you want to go from here.
Thanks, Mark. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mark. I actually like this idea of non-voting members because I think it does give the ability for us to have some of our family, like I said, I don't think Ryan will ever want to be on the youth commission. He's dealt enough with local politics by just hearing me from the living room tonight. But doesn't mean Logan will. But it also gives the ability for other members of this council to be able to appoint their children. So they stay involved and they want, if they want to know more or be involved and gives them that opportunity. So I think if we do that, we need to just look at the charter for the youth council and add non-voting members. I like that idea. That way we know we're not giving, we don't have that nepotism look to it.
Thanks, Joe. Sean?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thanks, Mark. I really do appreciate you looking into that. And those are intriguing. I don't think we, we we, the council right now is interested in expanding to hiring our relatives. But I like, I do like the idea of a non-voting member for the youth council. I want to think about it a little more, chew on it and, and see what the possibilities might be. But I do appreciate you looking into that. So thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Beth?
Yes, I've never sat in on a youth council meeting before. Do they offer a time, do they offer like public comment, for lack of a better word? Where, you know, if, if we ended up not moving forward to allow council members children to be appointed, would they still have an opportunity to speak at one of those meetings as a youth resident or?
Do you mean, do you mean if they were a part of the commission or?
No, if they weren't, like if, if we, if we left the policy the way it was, would would the children of, of council members still be able to give feedback or be involved in the process, just maybe not? As an official council, yeah, like a public comment.
Most of our commissions don't have a public comment period, but they, they're pretty loosely based.
You froze, Regan.
Well, Regan's frozen.
What I was gonna say is when an issue comes up, they can, people will interject. And I've seen that in several commissions and they invite comment from if anybody's there at the meeting.
Which kind of is a pseudo non-voting person, I guess. I mean, you know, participant, I guess. I don't know.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't compare a resident visiting a meeting to a non-voting member of the commission. I think those are two really separate positions.
Right. It's not the same, but it is the same way to, a different way to get a similar result. If they decided to.
Well, but if I might add this to the other benefit for the youth is this is a really great opportunity for them to grow, especially if they're a part of the board, even if they're
voting. Froze again.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I think, you know, one of the things that Mayor, Mayor Wagner mentioned the last time, oh, sorry. One of the things that Mayor, that, that kind of struck a chord with me that, that Mayor Wagner mentioned last time is that as council members, you know, and often like if you're a manager in a, in a company or a business, you're held to a different standard or a higher standard than everybody else because of your leadership. And that's sometimes comes with, it comes with perks, it comes with a certain level of influence, but that also means you don't always get to participate the way everybody else does because of, because of that role. And maybe there's value in teaching our youth that too, and still finding opportunities for them to get involved in the community. That's just a thought in my head. I'm.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else? I would still stand by what I said the last time, even if we have non-voting. But say we only have three positions for non-voting and then we choose a relative to fill that position and then now somebody else doesn't get it. So I still say that we're still held to a higher standard and we should just keep our code of ethics as it is posted. So Sean said we should continue to think about it. Joe made the comment about having non-voting positions, which we'd have to rewrite our code. What does counsel wish to do? Joe?
I say we leave it as is. I hate the term, but let's kick the can down the road for another year and, and just see where we're at, see if there's any interest. Because as of this moment, the only people on this council who have kids who were even of age to do this are Sean and myself. And I know, like I said, I said, your son's graduating this year, Jennifer.
Another one who's seventeen.
He's graduating, isn't he? Graduating? Nope. Next year. All right, whatever. Well, we, so Sean, Jennifer and I are the only ones who have kids who would be eligible for this at this time. And I think I think letting this go for another year, possibly longer, keeping as our current thing, keeping our current ethic standard and then seeing where things go, seeing if there is a more interest in the youth council and more applicants, or if there's not, then in that case, maybe we can even look at it as a and look at waiving the ethics for a year as a trial base. But I say, well, let's hold off, let's hold off for a year.
And Christina?
Have we ever been full on the youth council? Completely?
No, it's not filled up yet.
I don't think a year would change anything. It's, it's, it's difficult because the whole purpose of wanting to get involved is to make a difference. And if you're even as a non-voting member, you just get stripped of your entire, well, not entire purpose, but a big, big portion of it. It's tough. I understand we have a, we have an image to uphold. I get that. But man, I don't like it. I, I, I just don't, in my, if I, if I were to fall in my heart, I don't like it. I, it, it's frustrating because you choose, it's either you or your child, right? You have to make that choice. And I don't know what I would do in my case. But but if we're postponing it, we're postponing it.
Anybody else? Thank you, Christina. What does counsel wish to do?
So I can jump in here.
Yes, Mark.
At this point, if no action is taken, that is also okay. And what can happen is if any council member wishes to revisit this, they can go through the standard, adding something to a future agenda item policy and the council rules. So if council wishes to revisit this as a future point, they can go through the normal process and add it to a future agenda and we can discuss it further. So that always remains an option. So this does not foreclose having a future consideration of this. And if council is willing, I, I really want to thank council for their considered discussion of this because these are difficult topics to work through and consider both council's role in the community and how that affects council members' children and the other potential candidates for appointment to these offices. So I thank you very much. This has been very enlightening for me and I've really enjoyed watching council work through this difficult issue.
Thank you, Mark. And that, you bring up a good point because like the next item on the agenda, when we get to it is future agenda items. And I always ask council if there's anything they'd like to see at a future agenda item. So as long as we have a majority or a consensus of three or more, that can always be added back at a future date. Thank you for bringing that up, Mark. Anything else on this topic, council? All right. So thank you all very much. So then that does bring us to future agenda items. Looking at our next agenda, which is for June eighth, we have more interviews starting at possibly six o'clock. And then we have public hearings and looks like a full agenda again for more appointments. Joe?
Based on what we've all seen in the news recently about text messages about city business being gone missing from a certain mayor's cellphone in the region, I was wondering if we couldn't add to a future agenda talking about our Talking about our technology retention policy and. How that could go with OPMA and making sure we're all following the right code, right rules, so if Mark would be willing to. Give us a another, you know, twenty minute tutorial on making sure we don't screw things up. So we, we're not going through the same thing Seattle's going through right now.
That's a city issued phone that she's not keeping versus personal phones.
Yeah, and then I was also going to add, because of that and because of how. I'm always super worried of what I can and can't delete from certain things on here, maybe we discuss the possibility of. Issuing council members their own, a cellphone that, you know. You can talk on, send text messages and receive emails on, but that's. Pretty much it. The occasional pictures of your kid, but.
Is there? Other council members that wish to have that brought forward?
I am interested in hearing about the the retention policy for. Record keeping on our personal phones or laptops for that matter. Outside of the regular OPMA record retention, but. And maybe, maybe. Wouldn't hurt to just check out how much it would cost for a cellphone. From the city to keep all of the business separate.
But if that were necessary, I guess it's necessary. Sorry, what, what's the purpose of this phone strictly for email?
I would say it would be strictly for. City business, it'd be one of those, because there are times I'm worried that. I'm going to get asked, hey, what's that last text message you sent to Mayor Wagner? I was like, oh, this is happy birthday, well, it's public record, let me see it. And that'd be one of those, so, well, here, it's the city phone, you can. The city can have easier access to it than, you know, having to get ahold of Sprint or T-Mobile now, I guess. And getting records from from my phone that way.
I, I don't know that if that's necessary, but go ahead.
So I see, I see three people that want to bring back the retention policy. For a, just a briefing. Is that something you can do at a future meeting, Mark or Regan?
Yeah, yeah, we can, I I just want to clarify, so it's, it's just to discuss the. City councils kind of retention policy and and how they. Are using, doing public business on private devices, that clarify it?
Yes. Sean?
I guess I'd just like to make a case for the possibility of a city. Issued cellphone, I do have one for my work at ecology as well, so they did issue us one. For our work there, so it does get all my work email on that and. Keeps track of my text messages there too. I think the public's getting more and more sophisticated, we get. I know the city doesn't get as many, but ecology gets. Public disclosure requests all the time, and basically people are just writing one sentence, I want everything on such and such, and then. We have to give them everything on such and such, so I think it. It might, at a minimum, yes, we do need to know what the retention policy is on our own, using these these devices. Our own private devices, but I think. For. Our own. What do I say, assurances and and maybe even make sure we're complying with the law, it might be better to have a city issued cellphone. That we just get these things on, we could turn over if need be, so.
So I have three people that are interested in that. On the city issued phones as well, just information.
Okay, we'll, we'll move forward with both those items. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have anything else for a future agenda item? Sean, did you have something else?
Okay, no.
All right, let's move into, thank you all very much, let's move into council staff comments. Is everybody still here? Andy?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Andy. Ethan?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Dawn?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Jenna? You're leaving us.
I know, Mayor, that is what I was going to say, I just wanted to. Tell you all that I truly love Covington, you guys are wonderful, the council, you know, I really am impressed at the work you do. I've loved my time here. The staff is wonderful, Regan and the leadership team are amazing, so. As much as this is hard to say goodbye, no matter what, there's, there's opportunity out there and sometimes you just kind of have to. Go with your gut, so I just want to say thank you and. This is a, I guess, goodbye for now, but I'm sure we'll cross paths in many different ways, because. Government and development and what we do is is still a small world in King County.
Jenna, I just want to say thank you very much, because I've learned a lot from you. And it's been a pleasure working with you and partnering with you over these years. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to get to know you better as well.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jenna. Casey?
Just going to give a super quick update on the ARPA funds. So we're currently still not under contract with the state yet, but they have until June ninth. To give us some information about getting under contract with them, getting those funds awarded. They're allowed a thirty day extension if they need it, so by the latest, it would be July ninth. So I just wanted to let you know that we're keeping an eye on it, we haven't currently received any information from the state. But we expect to receive something probably in the next couple of weeks, and I'll keep you updated on everything after that.
Great, thank you, Casey. Regan?
Thank you, Mayor and council, and thanks, Casey, for that on the ARPA, we will. As I've mentioned, have put together the information and guidelines that we have from what we've received, and so. We'll be able to put those together and bring to council some options on how you'd like to see that that money spent and how it can do good in our community. So that's forthcoming, I wanted to let you know, we have thrown out a couple of dates about reopening City Hall with the state's plan to reopen. On June thirtieth, we thought we should open soon thereafter. It makes sense to do it right after the Fourth of July, instead of have this couple little day window after that, so. July fifth is when the holiday will actually be observed, and so we plan to open July sixth. At a limited capacity, but we'll. Get back to that normalcy with the mask mandate update, there's been a lot going on there with what the CDC has come out with and whatnot. The new guidance is that if people are vaccinated, they don't need to wear a mask, and for customers that come to our. Events, athletic events or into City Hall, that can just be on the honor system, whether they have been vaccinated or not. For staff or employees, we can verify that, so we will have a verification system. In place and that vaccination would need to be verified before they they can come to work without wearing a mask. So just a quick update there, and then I just want to recognize Jenna, she has just been such an amazing, exceptional part of our team. We just really appreciate her, she is absolutely just really creative, she's innovative. And a great member of our leadership team and and we, I just deeply appreciate. What she brought here and, you know, we get it, like. Sometimes we get them for a short time, sometimes we get them for a long time, but what they contribute. Is wonderful and Jenna's no exception to that, so she'll do great. Going back to Murray Franklin and I'm sure we'll see you around, so thank you, Jenna.
Thank you, Regan. Mark?
There's no executive session tonight and nothing further other than to say, Jenna, best of luck to you, it's been a pleasure working with you since coming on board here and. It's, you're very welcoming and I wish you the best, so have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Mark. Krista?
I will also wish Jenna the best in her new adventure and have a great evening, everyone, thanks for a lot of great discussion.
Thank you, Krista. Jared?
Yeah, I would just say good luck, Jenna. And good night.
Thank you, Jared. Sean?
No, I don't have anything. Good night.
Thank you, Sean. Christina?
That came past. Just thank you so much, Jenna, it, it's been great, the few chats that we've had, you're a super pleasant person, they're lucky to have you.
Thank you, Christina. Jennifer?
Same, we'll miss you, Jenna, I'm so sorry you're leaving, I get it, I understand, but we'll miss you. And good night, everyone.
Joe? Thank you, Jenna.
I just want to wish you good luck, Jenna, have a wonderful time in your new journey and good night, everybody, it's been a long one.
Yes, thank you, Joe. Beth?
Okay, Jenna, I have to say, say my goodbyes too, maybe we'll get together for sushi or something here before you head out. And looking forward to tomorrow night's Tri-Cities meeting. So, yeah, more fun times. But. Thanks, everybody, for all the great dialogue.
Thank you, Beth. I will reserve my comments to a future meeting, it's been a long night. One of the longest ones, so thank you all very much. And with that, we'll move on to our second public comment period, speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff, comments are not intended. For conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. And with that, I see that we have only one attendee still sticking with us, Robert, do you wish to address council tonight or? You have the chance. If not, then I will call this meeting adjourned at ten twenty-two, thank you all very much and have a great evening. And Robert, thank you for sticking it out tonight.
I think we set a record tonight.